Ready?
Ready.
All right.
Five, four, three, two.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the July 25, 2008 Board of Commissioners meeting. And today we have Pastor Tim Locke from East Cobb Presbyterian Church leading this invocation, and then Deputy Scott Berger from the Sheriff's Department leading some pledge allegiance. So those who are willing and able, please stand.
Before we do the pledge, let's pray together. Father in heaven, thank you for your unchangeableness. As James says, that you don't change, and that all good gifts come from you, that they are given to us to enjoy and to glorify you and be thankful with what you've given us. Father, help us, even as we debate taxation and millage and things like that, to remember how good we have it, to count the gifts that we have, and be thankful, and have a common goal as we work towards a good community, a moral community, and a community that strengthens the weak and encourages the faint-hearted. Bless this meeting. Give us thankful hearts in the name of our Savior Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, and to the citizens of this nation, and to the indivisible, liberating justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor and Deputy. I appreciate that. Before we do the first presentation, I have an announcement to make regarding zoning matters, Z-36. The Dobbin's Joint Land use study has been further reviewed and reflects development for residential low occupancy, which may be appropriate for the accident potential Zone 1. Therefore, at the August Board of Commissioners zoning meeting, I'll be making a motion to rescind the vote for Z-36. And if the rescission motion carries, Z-36 will be considered by the BOC. Otherwise, the vote from the July meeting will stand. So that, layman's turn, that means we're going to bring back Z-36 at the zoning next month, but I have to make an announcement at a recognized meeting before we can do that at the next meeting. Then now we have one presentation tonight, and that's going to be Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. If I could have the NTBA championship girls' basketball teams from Pope and North Cobb come up, and Vice Chair of the School Board, David Chastain, I believe is here, representing our great school board. He's going to help me tonight. He's going to be Vanna. Way to go, girls. Is your coach or anybody here too? Y'all are coaches? I thought you were girls players. Oh, my goodness. They're so young these days, young-looking. Okay, we're here to honor these girls for an outstanding season, our national champions. Oh, I can't tell you how, what an honor it is to be with you tonight and to recognize you for all your hard work and practice and your family's commitments to get you there, and it's just wonderful. So I'm going to read one certificate, and then I'm going to ask y'all to say a few words if you want to. So, "The Cobb County Board of Commissioners Certificate of Recognition Presented to North Metro Elite 14-U Girls Basketball Team. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you and the team for being crowned national champions in your outstanding accomplishments in 2018. Your hard work, dedication, good citizenship, and teamwork led to this achievement. Under the leadership and guidance of Head Coach Nikisha Kimball," that's you, "and Assistant Coach Robin Binkston," that's you, "your team amassed a record-setting 46 in one season." That's awesome. "And a 30-game winning streak." Where's the dream team when we need them? Y'all are going to get recruited. "You achieved a number-one overall ranking in Georgia in the final National Travel Basketball Association poll, representing more than 2,000 programs in the NTBA. Thirty-two teams from around the country and from Canada, the Caribbean, and Latin America traveled to Kansas with more than 360 athletes and 100 coaches participating. As a basketball player, you helped the team achieve greatness, and we're very proud of all your accomplishments." So this is from the Board of Commissioners behind you, and today's the 25th day of July. Congratulations.
Ms. Kaylee Hamby. Tabby Curtis. Coach Binkston. Coach Kimball. Emily Binkston. Deona Colvin, did I say that right? Claire Davis. Isabella Eden. Haley Johnson. And Claire Knight. And on behalf of the Cobb County Board of Education, we appreciate what you students represent. There's a lot of bad news in the papers, and each of you is a good news story, and thank you, coaches, for helping turn out these wonderful women.
I would like to first say thank you so much for honoring our girls. It's not every day that this happens. I'm pretty sure none of us have ever been on a stage like this before. It is a lot of work, but the girls make it fun. They make it worth it. The parents make it worth it. I do want to thank our program director who came tonight, Steve Rodriguez, for giving us the opportunity to even play on this level. Again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Okay, let's have a big round of applause and cheer for this team. Good job.
Okay, there'll be no further business before the board tonight.
Okay, good.
Before we get into the first of the public hearings, I'd like to recognize some distinguished guests tonight. We have Governor Barnes, I believe is here tonight. Please stand up. Good to have you, sir. The Agriculture Commissioner, Gary Black, is here tonight somewhere. And I'm almost hesitant to make this announcement, but I was told that Mayor Derek Easterling is here. I was just looking for somebody in a Viking outfit, but... Anyway, I was just going to say. All right, so with that, let's get into the public hearing. This is how we're going to do this. The first public hearing is going to be on the millage rate, and we're going to have the public, I'm going to open to a public hearing. The same rules apply unlimited speakers, three minutes a shot. I'd like you to stick to the millage rate issue, but if you want it in the budget, I'm not going to stop you. It's just, I realize sometimes they merge. And then after we've heard all the speakers, then I'll open the floor to the board for discussion, and then I'll make a motion for a millage rate. If the millage rate that I've been proposing, you know, it's pretty well-known by now, passes, then we're going to go into the, we're still going to do the third public hearing. We'll do the third public hearing on the budget, and then the same format applies there, speakers, time limit, discussion by the board, and then the vote. If the millage rate of 1.7 doesn't pass, we're still going to have the third public hearing for the budget, but we can't address the budget tonight. We can't vote on the budget, because obviously the millage rate doesn't support the budget that get, with that millage rate. So what that'll require is another public hearing in September, and I know you're really excited about that. Okay? So that's when we'll do the next public hearing, because we have to make the announcement, and we got to put it in the paper, and we got to make sure we comply with the Open Records and Open Meetings Act. So the next public hearing, as I've been told by my finance guy, will be in September. All right?
Chairman, just to clarify, actually, if the budget does not pass, the public hearing would be on August 28, and the adoption of the budget would take place on September 11.
Okay, all right, so just minor correction there. The bottom line is, if the millage rate doesn't pass tonight, we're going to still have the public hearing, but we're not going to, we're not going to vote on the budget. All right? Everybody understand that? We're good on that? Okay. I noticed some of you had signs. I just ask, as courtesy, please hold your signs down, because that means the person behind you can't see what's going on here. All right? So I get you're going to get excited, and you're going to support your team. I'm fine with that after your speaker, but please, while they're talking, please don't hold a sign up, because that distracts from the person behind you. All right? So with that, I now open the third public hearing on the proposed, on the 2008 proposed property tax increase as defined by Georgia law. And with that, same thing, just come on up, three minutes, don't, as you so choose, and then I'll make sure you all get to talk, but please don't stand in the center, because that means you're blocking the person behind you, and I want to make sure that everybody can see what we're doing up here. Okay? So while the person's up here, please go back to your seat and just take a seat there. I'll guarantee you're all going to speak. No one's, everyone's going to get a chance to speak tonight. I promise that. So please sit down until you make your way up to the podium.
Thank you for your valuable time this evening. I appreciate you allowing me to speak to you this evening.
GM, last, one last thing. I just asked that you identify who you are and where you live, so for the public record.
All right? I'm Jim Nay, and I live at 554 Hackney Drive here in Marietta, of course. I'm delighted to have a chance to chat with you, because I moved to this county some 45 years ago. I moved here with a purpose. I had lived in Atlanta all the previous portion of my life. I looked around and tried to find out where I wanted to live and where I wanted to be a part of, and I noticed that Cobb County was prosperous, progressive, thoughtful, and moving forward. Please don't stop us from doing that. We must and absolutely have to continue doing so. How can we find ourselves living in a county or even a metropolitan area where people who want to use a library, particularly young and people who can't afford it, want to use a library on Saturday or Sunday, and that library isn't open? That's absolutely a significant negative consequence. Anybody who doesn't take note of that is just not keeping their eyes open. Anybody who doesn't know that we don't have adequate police protection, adequate police coverage, that we don't have equipment and the necessary items in order to take sure, make sure that we're all being protected within our homes and within our neighborhoods. It's an imperative that this be cared for. I beg you and ask you please to pass the 1.7 environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jan Barton. I live in Marietta. I have laryngitis, so bear with me. I urge the commissioners to vote no on the unnecessary harmful millage increase and no on the shamefully bloated new budget. I'm sorry I have to intermingle them, because they are intermingled. I could have used a three-letter word tonight that my sweet southern mama told us not to use. The word is lie, but I won't use that word. I will just imply it. Number one, that we were told we have a $30 million to $50 million budget deficit and must raise taxes to pay for it. No, it is not 30 million. It is 19.7 million. This is from our own 2018 annual report. The 2017 budget was balanced. There is no deficit in that budget. Second, this deficit was self-inflicted by the current board. They did not have to give almost half the county employees raises at this time. That's $10 million. They did not have to give the Braves an additional $11 million when their own staff told them we had already fulfilled that agreement. The list is long. Number two, we were told we have, we've cut expenses to the bone. There is nowhere else to cut. No, the list of so-called cuts shown to citizens in the series of town hall meetings was also an untruth, because those cuts were not done by this board. They were minimal, those were cuts from the previous chairman. There were minimal cuts this time by our current board. We must cut libraries, this is number three. We must cut libraries, parks, senior services, and animal control unless we raise taxes. No, the county has at least $25 million to $47 million over projected in this current budget, and will have at least $47 million or more over projections in the new proposed budget based on rising revenue streams. Fact, the new budget has no or only small increases in the services that we were promised to be restored with the tax increase. Look at the new budget, people. Number four, there is no tent city plan. This was in the recent video by our chairman in reference to what was told to the MDJ. Go to the website Cobb Hope Park or the Facebook page Cobb Central to see the June email from John Morgan to county staff confirming a June meeting and the attached homeless camp budget proposal. Lies five through 10, sorry I said I wasn't going to use that word, campaign promises. Our current chairman said, "I promise to lead a government that is lean, because it will be fiscally responsible. We won't be mirroring Tim Lee's support of new and higher taxes actions which do not reflect Republican values. All of you Republicans on the board, promise to represent those values. We ask you to vote no, please."
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. My name is Steve Gaynor, and I am the president of the local Fraternal Order Police located here in Cobb County. I rise before you tonight to voice the concerns of the more than 700 members of my lodge. Many of these members are officers and deputies who are employed by the Cobb County Police Department and the Cobb County Sheriff's Office. Over the last few years, we have quietly stood by as our resources and staffing have dwindled, to the point that we are now in a crisis situation. At this point, not only are our officers and deputies' lives and safety in jeopardy, but the safety and security of our citizens, taxpayers, and visitors to Cobb County are also now at risk. Both the past and present commission boards have stated that public safety is number one, but you have not shown it. We continue to lose personnel at a rate that is impossible to keep up with. Cobb County has failed to take steps to attract and retain qualified and qualified and experienced officers and deputies. Other local agencies have made and created sign-on bonuses, retention bonuses, and attracted other, our officers and deputies who now have, our deputies and officers here who now have poor pay, terrible retirement plan, and even rising costs in health care. All of this to continue pledged by the commission to do what is right for the correct, to correct these issues being faced by public safety, but you've done nothing. I am asking this commission board here tonight to approve the 1.7 millage increase and pledge to make a promise to use as much funding as possible to purchase vehicles for the police department and develop a plan to address the pay issue, failing retirement plan, and the equipments facing, issue facing the police and sheriff's department. If you fail to act tonight by approving the millage increase and properly addressing the funding of the 2019 budget, the officers, deputies, and citizens will suffer. Thank you for your time.
My name is Jerry Koczak. I live in District 2. When my job transferred me to Atlanta in 1995, my wife and I decided to settle in Cobb County. We chose Cobb because of reasonable home values, wide-open spaces, spaces, and low taxes. Now that we are both retired and on a fixed income, we find ourselves with a difficult decision. We want to downsize and stay in Cobb, but we're not sure we can afford it. Commissioners have approved years of overbuilding to the point that we are now have serious housing density and traffic congestion. Most new homes in senior communities come with a luxury price tag, and now the board wants to raise the budget over 30%. In my working career, I never received a 30% merit increase, yet the board wants an unmerited 30% increase without any significant cuts. This added time in property values and county revenue have increased significantly. Thus, our commissioners want to lay on us a double tax whammy of higher property taxes from increased values plus a huge 1.7 million increase. To add insult to injury, the chairman blames low revenue on those who enjoy the floating home state exemption. That's people like my wife and me, who've lived in the same home for 23 years, paid our taxes on time, supported our police and community, and played by the rules. Maybe some of the commissioners would prefer that we move out of Cobb so that a younger family can move in and pay higher taxes. If that is true, it is sad and shameful. Yet the higher taxes due to increasing values and the millage rate are only parts one and two of a five-part tax increase. Part three is the raising of water sewer rates. Why is the Cobb Water Fund underwater? Because the board transfers 10% of water revenues to the general fund every year to cover overspending in other areas. Also, we are in danger of losing our triple, AAA bond rating. That's because the board uses up almost all of our reserves to paper over more poor budgeting decisions. Our fund to cover retired employee pension healthcare commitments is willfully underfunded. If we lose our AAA rating, that will increase power and costs, which is a potential fourth tax increase. Fifth, after all this, next year the board will be asking for 1% sales tax increase, which will take us from 6% to 7%. The sales tax increase would pay for a 19th, 19th-century transit scheme in a 21st-century economy. I conclude that our board does not have a revenue problem, they have a spending problem. They have made numerous poor spending decisions compounded by an unwillingness by some to discuss any cuts. I want our commissioners to return to proven sound, fiscally sound principles. No, actually, back to fiscal sanity. The budget holes of their own making, as Winston Churchill said, "When you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." Thank you.
The word is lie, but I won't use that word. I will just imply it. Number one, that we were told we have a $30 million to $50 million budget deficit and must raise taxes to pay for it. No, it is not 30 million. It is 19.7 million. This is from our own 2018 annual report. The 2017 budget was balanced. There is no deficit in that budget. Second, this deficit was self-inflicted by the current board. They did not have to give almost half the county employees raises at this time. That's $10 million. They did not have to give the Braves an additional $11 million when their own staff told them we had already fulfilled that agreement. The list is long. Number two, we were told we have cut expenses to the bone. There is nowhere else to cut. No, the list of so-called cuts shown to citizens in the series of town hall meetings was also an untruth because those cuts were not done by this board. They were minimal. Those were cuts from the previous chairman. There were minimal cuts this time by our current board. We must cut libraries. This is number three. We must cut libraries, parks, senior services, and animal control unless we raise taxes. No, the county has at least $25 million to $47 million over projected in this current budget and will have at least $47 million or more over projections in the new proposed budget based on rising revenue streams. In fact, the new budget has no or only small increases in the services that we were promised to be restored with the tax increase. Look at the new budget, people. Number four, there is no tent city plan. This was in the recent video by our chairman in reference to what was told to the MDJ. Go to the website Cobb Hope Park or the Facebook page Cobb Central to see the June email from John Morgan to county staff confirming a June meeting and the attached homeless camp budget proposal. Lies five through 10. Sorry, I said I wasn't going to use that word. Campaign promises. Current chairman said, "I promise to lead a government that is lean because it will be fiscally responsible. We won't be mirroring Tim Lee's support of new and higher taxes actions which do not reflect Republican values. All of you Republicans on the board promise to represent those values."
Thank you, ma'am, for your time.
We ask you to vote no, please.[250.12][250.12][applause]
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. My name is Steve Gaynor, and I am the president of the local Fraternal Order of Police located here in Cobb County. I rise before you tonight to voice the concerns of the more than 700 members of my lodge. Many of these members are officers and deputies who are employed by the Cobb County Police Department and the Cobb County Sheriff's Office. Over the last few years, we have quietly stood by as our resources and staffing have dwindled to the point that we are now in a crisis situation. At this point, not only are our officers and deputies' lives and safety in jeopardy, but the safety and security of our citizens, taxpayers, and visitors to Cobb County are also now at risk. Both the past and present commission boards have stated that public safety is number one, but you have not shown it. We continue to lose personnel at a rate that is impossible to keep up with. Cobb County has failed to take steps to attract and retain qualified and qualified and experienced officers and deputies. Other local agencies have made and created sign-on bonuses, retention bonuses, and attracted our officers and deputies who now have our deputies and officers here who now have poor pay, terrible retirement plan, and even rising costs in health care. All of this to continue pledged by the commission to do what is right for the correct to correct these issues being faced by public safety, but you've done nothing. I am asking this commission board here tonight to approve the 1.7 millage increase and pledge to make a promise to use as much funding as possible to purchase vehicles for the police department and develop a plan to address the pay issue, failing retirement plan, and the equipments facing issue facing the police and sheriff's department. If you fail to act tonight by approving the millage increase and properly addressing the funding of the 2019 budget, the officers, deputies, and citizens will suffer. Thank you for your time.[391.41][391.41][applause]
My name is Jerry Kochuk. I live in District Two. When my job transferred me to Atlanta in 1995, my wife and I decided to settle in Cobb County. We chose Cobb because of reasonable home values, wide open spaces, spaces, and low taxes. Now that we are both retired and on a fixed income, we find ourselves with a difficult decision. We want to downsize and stay in Cobb, but we're not sure we can afford it. Commissioners have approved years of overbuilding to the point that we are now have serious housing density and traffic congestion. Most new homes in senior communities come with a luxury price tag, and now the board wants to raise the budget over 30%. In my working career, I never received a 30% merit increase, yet the board wants an unmerited 30% increase without any significant cuts. This added time and property values and county revenue have increased significantly. Thus, our commissioners want to lay on us a double tax whammy of higher property taxes from increased values plus a huge 1.7 million increase. To add insult to injury, the chairman blames low revenue on those who enjoy the floating homestead exemption. That's people like my wife and me, who've lived in the same home for 23 years, paid our taxes on time, supported our police and community, and played by the rules. Maybe some of the commissioners would prefer that we move out of Cobb so that a younger family can move in and pay higher taxes. If that is true, it is sad and shameful. Yet the higher taxes due to increasing values and the millage rate are only parts one and two of a five-part tax increase. Part three is the raising of water sewer rates. Why is the Cobb Water Fund underwater? Because the board transfers 10% of water revenues to the general fund every year to cover overspending in other areas. Also, we are in danger of losing our triple AAA bond rating. That's because the board uses up almost all of our reserves to paper over more poor budgeting decisions. Our fund to cover retired employee pension healthcare commitments is willfully underfunded. If we lose our AAA rating, that will increase borrowing costs, which is a potential fourth tax increase. Fifth, after all this, next year, the board will be asking for 1% sales tax increase, which will take us from 6% to 7%. The sales tax increase would pay for a 19th century transit scheme in a 21st century economy. I conclude that our board does not have a revenue problem. They have a spending problem. They have made numerous poor spending decisions compounded by an unwillingness by some to discuss any cuts. I want our commissioners to return to proven sound, fiscally sound principles. No, actually, back to fiscal sanity.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
The budget holes of their own making, as Winston Churchill said, "When you find yourself in a hole, stop digging."
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Odell. I live on John Ward Road in West Cobb County. I am a business owner in the community, a commercial property owner, as well as a residential property owner. I come tonight asking you to increase the millage rate in the full amount requested. And for what is for my purposes, you'd want to raise it 1.9 or 2.1, that'd be fine with me, too, because I expect the best in this county. And whatever the best cost, I expect you to deliver. My remarks tonight, I'm going to address most specifically to my friend Bob Weatherford. Although it could be true to any of you, I'm going to ask that he receive these marks remarks in special form tonight. Nobody ever shows up at these meetings and says, "Thank you, Bob. Thank you for cutting my taxes." For year after year after year where this county has rolled back the millage rate and my property tax bill on my home has gone down, I say thank you. Now, there's a lot of confusion out there that I've run into, and what people believe is when their bill goes up that it's your fault, when the reality is it is the fault of other taxing authorities over which you have no control. I printed my tax bills. People have called me and asked me, "Why does the county raise my taxes every year?" Whenever I confront anybody by pulling up the public records that are their tax bills, I show them that you, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, you, Bob Weatherford, have cut their taxes repeatedly, again and again and again. And crowds of people don't show up like this to say, "Thank you." So I'm here tonight, Bob, to say thank you for cutting taxes again and again for this county. And as I said, those remarks could be true for any of you that have sat on this commission, but I hope, in light of the slings and arrows of outrageous fortune that you have taken in recent weeks, that you will receive those remarks, my friends, specially tonight. So thank you on behalf of everyone whose taxes you have cut repeatedly in years. Now, where we are tonight is it's time to make up for lost ground. Those taxes have been cut, and people have enjoyed those benefits. I've looked. If you pass the millage rate proposed tonight, my bill will restore itself largely to where it was in 2011, before you started on a series of rollback millage cuts. And I'm asking you to do that, and I have no problem with it. When other individuals say, "Well, other jurisdictions aren't having to raise their millage rate," they'll find that those other jurisdictions have not done as you have done and cut their taxes repeatedly, again and again and again. And I'll challenge anyone to present where their tax bill on their primary residence due to the floating homestead exemption has not gone down as mine have, and all of us owe all of you, but particularly tonight, you, Bob Weatherford, a debt of gratitude for doing that to us. So please do the right thing. Support the millage tax increase to whatever extent is possible to allow this county to deliver the best.
Good evening. My name is Jo Ellen Smith. I live in East Cobb. One thing I wanted to say first off, Mr. Chairman, I had not been following this very closely. I did follow it in the newspapers, and one thing that really impressed me is that in one of your meetings, first off, the number of meetings you have, thank you, that transparency is very welcome. But in one of the meetings, you said to the audience, "There's no need for public records requests, freedom of information. If you want something, just ask." And somebody stood up and asked for something, and you pointed to a staff member and said, "See that guy in the corner and give him your email address." I think if anyone has never worked with a county or a state government, they don't understand this type of transparency is very rare and very, very appreciated. So thank you for your leadership. As a daughter of a Marine, I may be a little jaded, but I think that's perhaps where your leadership comes from. As I said, I had not really been following it closely, and I started looking at it because I did hear, you know, a use mishegosh about this. And I said, "What is this all about?" And then when I looked into it, I saw it's $200 a year or $16 a month. $16 a month. And I, yeah, $16 a month is nice, but anyone who's ever had a cable bill or an AT&amp;T bill or gone into Starbucks, $4 a week doesn't get you very far. For the price of libraries, parks, the quality of life that we have here, the senior centers in Cobb, and I was very moved by that public, the officer who was up here before, the police officer, who said that they need stronger support. My God, I will give up a Starbucks so that our police have whatever the hell they want.[918.51][918.51][laughter] Sorry. Sorry. I'm really embarrassed. I apologize. Anyway, I'm obviously in favor of this $16 a month millage rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Jo.[941.13][941.13][applause]
Good evening. I'm Lance LaRusso. I live up in East Cobb. I'm the general counsel for the Georgia Fraternal Order of Police and one of the attorneys for the local lodge. I also have served in law enforcement in one capacity or another for close to 30 years. I've lived in Cobb for about 29. I teach about 2,000 law enforcement officers a year from the United States and Canada. And police departments all over the United States and Canada are having a problem. There's a 90% drop in recruiting across the United States, and you're going to be hit with it in Cobb. You're already being hit with it in Cobb. Your recruiting is down to one-third of where it normally was. Why do Cobb police officers and sheriff's deputies leave Cobb County? Because we have incredibly high standards. We don't hire people that other folks do, and we train them well. And that means when they want to leave, there's people waiting to take them. The problem is that in Cobb County, we have people who are going to public safety, who have become good consumers of what you give them in return for them putting their lives on the line. When they read that they can have a take-home car, and then they find out there aren't enough cars, they go somewhere else. When they read that our pension is 52% funded, they go somewhere else. When they find out after a few years that they're not going to get a raise, they go somewhere else. And in today's economy, they can go somewhere else. The sad thing is I'm rising here to ask you to support this 1.7% millage increase. But if you don't do something to prioritize public safety, you're going to be right back here again like you've been in the past 29 years I've been here. And everybody on this commission says they support public safety. I have never met anyone in public office who didn't, especially if you ask them. They'll be more than happy to tell you they support public safety. You have avenues available to you to make sure they're adequately funded, to make sure these budget shortfalls are covered so it doesn't affect public safety. Now, tonight, when you go to sleep after your vote, the same people who were protecting you last night are going to be there again tonight, and it's what they do. And they'll respond generally within about four to six minutes. Fortunately, the state patrol has been working wrecks on the interstate. That's why they're responding so quickly. They've been doing more with less. The problem is, will they be there the day after that? You need to vote this increase in place and then work together to solve this problem in the future.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Neela Gabler. I'm a lifetime resident of Cobb County. I live in District One. I'm also a recently retired Cobb County employee. I enjoyed 20-plus years with Cobb Parks, serving out of the Art Place Mountain View. I started as a contracted instructor, was hired as the art specialist, and retired as the coordinator there. I'm speaking tonight because of my lifetime passion for the arts and my beloved Art Place, but I'm also remembering the hard-working Cobb County employees, especially of Cobb Parks, people that I worked with very closely as a team for years. I'm also remembering when the 2007 and beyond budget issues happened, we worked together towards keeping our jobs and services by doing what was asked of us at the time. We knew we weren't alone. You could turn on the news and see that other cities and counties were in the same place as we were, trying not to lay off their employees, trying not to close facilities. And we saw our county doing that as well, and we appreciated it. So we took the cuts and raises for five years. We took the forlough days and understood. In our department, the art centers were asked to close one day a week, and the recreational centers and other centers like that changed their hours to only be open during heavy programming times, and to date, those changes are still in place. The other day, Facebook reminded me, as it sometimes will, of other things that happened in years past. Ironically, it told me about something seven years ago that's exactly what we're doing here tonight. Employees were waiting to see if the millage rate would be increased so they could keep their jobs and services that they give the public. The difference tonight is that we are alone. The economy is working. Subdivisions that sat halfway undone have been finished. New ones are being built. New businesses are opening, and old ones are flourishing. Why is Cobb suffering alone? I think the reasons of how we got here were very well explained, Chairman voiced at some of the hall meetings, but we could also see the reasons for decisions that were made out of our own control. Whatever the reason, what I know to be true is that the Art Place paid off its debt service 10 years before it was due because of revenue brought in by the people who use it and still use it today. And now it's on a list to be closed. I've recently been relieved by hearing you say, or I've read where you said that you would never close facilities and parks that are well utilized. But if the mail doesn't pass tonight and if it's less than 1.7, I'm asking you, where is the money going to come from? Are these latest statements hollow patronizing ones? Whether you realize it or not, your parks, your libraries, your senior services, your extension services
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
have been removed from the desired section and been in the essential section of the budget for years when you say that Cobb is a great place to live, work, and play, not just a great place to live and work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Major John Woods, U.S. Army, retired. I've been a resident of Cobb County since 1983, went and transferred here with the Army. I come before you to oppose any tax increases. At the last meeting, I watched a cavalcade of single-issue residents voice their opinions, and among them were these nonprofits and residents that want to spend other people's money on their pet projects. They stood before you and demanded more and more of our money, lauding you with praise in an attempt to shame you if you don't give them more of our money. These accolades were bestowed upon you are nothing more than a form of reverse shaming. If you don't do what they want, then you're not kind, noble, wise, and so on. If they are so great, let them stand on their own merits, not on the shoulders of the taxpayers. This is nothing more than taking from those with the greatest ability and giving it to those with the greatest need. So I'd like to propose that you balance the budget not by taxing us more, but by having the county live within a stated budget. You can start by selling off the dog parks, getting rid of the defined employee benefit program, let the nonprofits stand on their own merits, let the Braves pay for their own security, sell off the Maple House, stop with all the beautification projects until it balances budget, sell off the golf course, do not buy any more parkland, privatize the private transit system, put a tax on the Braves tickets, privatize performing arts center, reduce all nonessential government programs, and limit the size and scope of county government just to start with. As far as Cobb being one of the lowest taxed counties in the metro area, that's outstanding. It's a fallacious argument to state that we should be taxed more based on our ranking of the percentage we are taxed. We are not here to compete with other out-of-control, taxes-bent counties in order to determine who can have the highest taxes. When you feed the monster, it craves more and more of what you're feeding it, our money. I listened to several people voice their opinions in favor of higher taxes for their own issues, yet I did not hear a single one of them demand fiscal responsibility, prudent use of our tax dollars, for you to establish a budget and spend it within accordance of the established budget. Reduce the size of government and cut out the fraud, waste, and abuse. You have a responsibility to use our tax dollars in a prudent manner, which means not spending our money on frivolous, nice-to-have, or special-interest endeavors. Anything that deviates from that is unethical and a breach of the public trust.
Good evening. My name is Helen Gorham, and I live in West Cobb. Tonight, some individuals call the current budget crisis a spending issue, and in light of the approval of the second part of the Parks Bond without approving a way to finance it, and in light of the continued practice of using reserves from both the general fund and water fund until they are totally depleted, these individuals make a great point. Some individuals blame the budget crisis on their claims that the budget is full of pork, and there is still much fat on the bone to be cut. I'm sure they do not remember the 2011 Citizens Oversight Committee report that showed there was very little fat and excess to be cut, except in the areas of employee health and retirement benefits. These areas were addressed and amended as per the report, along with the promotion of incentive packages for early retirement and the reduction of the size of the county workforce. It gave new meaning to having to do a lot more with a lot less staff. Some individuals blame the budget crisis on the Braves stadium. The budget woes began way before the Braves came to Cobb. It actually began back in 1996, when the then-chairman Bill Byrne in the commission transferred $19 million from the water fund for the extension of sewer service with the promise that it would be paid back to the water department. Not only has it never been paid back, but the borrowing escalated throughout the years. Therefore, we can say that the county has a borrowing problem. By the way, I'm sure that some of the individuals who blame the Braves may also be part of the 66% of constituents who contacted the then-chairman and four other commissioners in favor of the deal. Yes, 66% of the correspondents to our offices was in favor of the Braves deal, but this is hardly ever mentioned. This recent unfinanced spending, 22 years of borrowing, and creative financing brings us to tonight to the fact that our reserves are gone. Cobb County DOT is almost entirely funded through SPOLOST and is not a budgeted item. Maintenance of capital assets is covered by SPOLOST and not the operating budget. Seniors are asked to pony up. Our AAA credit rating is in jeopardy. There are suggestions to close the Safety Village, where an education program teaches children and seniors how to stay safe and alive during threatening situations. I ask you tonight to pass a millage rate increase that will finally stop the need for financial mismanagement, and do not reduce it with the passage of each new budget.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioner
I had the honor to serve. I'm sorry.
I was going to recognize you. I apologize. I didn't see you out there. This is Commissioner Helen Gorham, who sat on this board before, and I want to point it out to thank you tonight for your comments.[1664.35][1664.35][applause]
I had the honor to serve 12 years, supported the millage rate increase during the recession because there was no Plan B for dealing with the decline in the property values. It was a very tough decision to make, one that carried political consequences, but it was the right decision to make, just like tonight's decision. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. I will be brief with my comments. My name is Jennifer Yan Kulova. I live in District Three. I am a homeowner. I am an attorney at Cobb Legal Aid here on the square. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the increase of the millage rate. I think it's practical. I think it's reasonable. I think that it's vital to sustain our community. We need to keep Cobb a great place to live, and the increase is necessary for that. So I ask that you vote yes for the increase.[1721.01][1721.01][applause]
Ask you to please sit down. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Carrie Bayer, and I live in Powder Springs. I'm here tonight to ask you to save the Extension Office and increase the millage rate. Over 1,400, that's the number of fifth graders that the Cobb Extension Office has served through their FACS program, teaching science. Over a half a million dollars, that's the amount of in-kind support that over 250 master gardeners have dedicated their time to for this county, another program of the Cobb Extension Office. Over 80 kids in project achievement, as well as numerous kids representing Cobb and the state of Georgia, some at state congress right now, some representing at Southern Regionals next week, over 13 states. All these kids through public speaking, leadership, horses, poultry, cooking, and science. These kids and families are all Cobb 4-Hers. Tonight, you have a difficult decision to make related to the budget. The Cobb Extension is an example of Cobb services having a generational The Cobb Extension is an example of Cobb services having a generational impact. The office programming reaches kids, families, and seniors across races, ages, cultures, and faiths. It has more than demonstrated its impact on Cobb and the state of Georgia, and it's definitely a return on investment. The tagline of 4H is to make the best better. We happen to think that Cobb is the best. Please make sure tonight's vote helps make Cobb better. Save the Extension Office, even if it means a millage rate increase. Thank you.
My name is Craig Harfoot, and I live on 5489 Lower Roswell Road. I used to come all the time. I remember when Helen was running, Gorham. And anyhow, what I'd like to say tonight is, I heard all the employees about the bad times after the housing bust, that I had come to the meetings and told why it was happening, you know, the bubble that funded the Iraq War. Well, anyhow, the county, under Olens, gave the banks a pass. They fired all the teachers. They let the banks not pay the taxes. They were millions of dollars on the rolls uncollected, and that's why you were doing all this stuff to these employees, the other board. And the truth of the matter is, the bankers under the Council for Quality Growth and I think the lobbyist group under Mike Parrish, it's a banker cartel, and the same people that are talking about your bonding, threatening to be bad, Georgia Fund One, all the state monies, county monies go into that, and they loan it back to you at a little bit higher. Well, anyhow, the deal is, if you raise the millage rate, which Sam Olens always said, "That's raising taxes." I said, "Well, you raised our assessments." That's not raising taxes. Where you got the highest assessments, where I live. So it's like this thing, but right now on Paper Mill Road, there's a bunch of houses for sale with no takers, over a million dollars. That's a problem, big problem. So they're hitting all the ones in the twos, the threes, the fours. I'm watching people move in behind me, and they're, it's like extended family to make it work, to be able to, they got, you know, two generations. The problem is, the people that elect you, the money, you know, they want more money, and that's why you have a spending problem. You know, it's like, "Give us some SPOLOST money." But then it takes money to run the facilities. That's the problem. And, you know, I have no prob- Sure, we need police. We need essential services. But until you can rein in the donors to your campaigns to get you to quit cutting them deals, and that raising our taxes, that's the issue I have. And it's our whole election process. It's like, you say no to them, you see, if you get elected again, they'll run somebody else against you. That's the way it works. And that's what's sad about it. I mean, this is where you got to have courage once you're in office. You got to know when to say no.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Vicky Ross, District 3. No, what's sad is we've got here from them constantly voting no on our vote, lowering our taxes. How did they let us get here? These poor people, the police, they're frightened about their jobs, having money to be able to live. And shame on you all for doing that. A little decrease doesn't mean anything to me. But this huge increase does mean something to me, and I don't agree with it. My heart goes out to you. But there's got to be a better way. Mr. Chairman, your town hall meetings came across to me as a hard sell with a doom and gloom attached if the increase fails. One thing I've learned in my many years is that a "got to act now" hard sell is usually bad news and to back away. You've also been quoted that you want to get our services back to pre-recession levels. What does that mean? And why are pre-recession levels so Nirvana to you? Society and people have changed a lot since the recession. Do we really need to restore pre-recession hours in the libraries? The change here is that usage has gone down this past decade, not only in Georgia, also nationally. But that's just an example. My complaint isn't with the exceptional libraries, the exceptional people that work there. It's with how in the world did we get here in the first place? And my complaint is with the arbitrariness of it all. I don't understand the metrics used to justify restoring pre-recession levels to things when our landscape has changed. The recession has taught us all to be frugal. So Commissioners, I haven't heard any of you mention any other possibilities, all the wonderful things that were mentioned at the last meeting, such as not building sidewalks that go nowhere, further increases to user fees. What has been done with that? So if an increase is needed, make it small. Then at the subsequent budget hearing, let us know what you're doing with all the suggestions, along with your own ideas, and have estimated timeframes attached to that. And finally, after looking at the slides online, I'm curious how the Commissioners' 1 Million Contingency Fund is typically spent. I don't know. I'm just curious. Tense, maybe? I don't know.
Good evening, Chairman Boyce and distinguished members of the Commission. My name is Joel Cope. I'm the president of the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and I rise in support of this proposed millage rate increase. Cobb County's been having a series of town halls around the county, giving citizens a chance to hear about the county's financial situation and taking questions from citizens regarding the plans to try and increase the millage rate. Members of the Board of the Mableton Improvement Coalition, or MIC for short, have attended many of these town halls, even the ones not held in Mableton itself, and we've read up on the issue and have heard the questions posed by the town halls. The MIC Board held a recent board meeting and thoroughly discussed the subject of the millage rate increase being proposed, and for much deliberation, the Board voted to take a position on this issue, which we did not always do in cases of public discussion. And we voted to support the millage rate increase of 1.7 mills proposed by Chairman Boyce. We did not take this position lightly. The members of this Board are not immune of what we're proposing. We know that we're going to be paying these taxes and increase in millage rates that we're proposing. But the MIC Board has a history of speaking up and taking a stand on issues which impact our community and the larger county. Even with this millage rate increase, Cobb County taxes will remain lower than in similarly situated counties. I understand the points made by others, that we can't always compare ourselves, but I do believe that we have to understand that these things are not in isolation. We're not saying Cobb County needs to raise its millage rates to match other counties, just to offer perspective. As we work with the county on a daily basis, we're continually impressed by the dedication, efficiency, and professionalism of the staff. They've been working away tirelessly these last few years, and time and time again, when critics are looking for places to save money, they're always looking for these employees to take it on the chin. All the while, these same critics are expecting speedy and effective service, and of course, delivered with a smile. These employees have families as well. They're our neighbors. They're the people we see in church, in the grocery store. They're not just random people who parachuted in here. We're dismayed at the lack of resources for some very important services. Students who depend on the libraries for computers and research materials do their schoolwork face shorter and shorter library hours. Riders who go and mow because longer amounts of time can go between mowing. Riders who depend solely on the county's transit system see their routes dropped and cut back. Odometers on police vehicles roll over 200,000 and 300,000 mileage mark, and police officers face the prospect of continuing to go without take-home cars. And parks need to add staff badly to help programming. I could go on, but I'm mindful of the time limit and wish to allow others to speak. Our motto as a county has always been "Expect the Best." Will the citizens still be able to expect the best if the millage rate is voted down? This is not about who has the most signs and the most speakers. It's about what is needed. A famous five-star U.S. general once said, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others." That general was Douglas MacArthur. We hope that all five Commissioners will support this increase so the county and our community can continue to prosper and continue to be the great place we have to work, live, and to play. Thank you so much.
My name's Andy Soha. I just wanted to say that there's a lot of pet projects in Cobb County. There's a lot of privilege in Cobb County. I'd like to speak more from the people that don't have the privilege. There's a lot of people in this county that cannot afford this tax increase. I knocked on doors Saturday. No one I talked to while I was knocking on doors wanted a tax increase. Most homeowners in this county do not want a tax increase. They may not know why. They may not have studied the issues as many of you have. But I believe this Board may need to look at other ways and develop other ways to find cost savings, instead of, I believe, I would just say, take the easier way out, which is to go ahead and continue to increase and increase, and how many more increases are we going to have? So I do believe there's other ways to look and find and create ways of tax savings. Our retail outspaces are, still haven't recovered from the recession. There's many subdivisions that haven't recovered, many retail spaces in every, every place where there's retail spaces, they're empty, in so many places. So we need to work on community development and small business and put people in these empty outspaces that creates a better tax base. I would just like to say that I don't believe the economy's fully recovered. Our wages haven't fully recovered. Cost of living has increased significantly in the last few years for a lot of people. Food has increased, and luckily, our gas prices have gone down. There's a lot of underprivileged in Cobb County that really can't afford this tax increase. So I'd like you to consider that. Thank you.
And do you live, so do you live in Cobb County?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
My name is Shelley Calico. I live in West Cobb in District 1, and I've been, attended Cobb County High School, and I've also been a homeowner and resident for 19 years. I moved here to work for one of Cobb's and the nation's largest employers. Times were prosperous. Things were great, but we kept decreasing our millage rate as well. My family has enjoyed the services of libraries, parks, and aquatic centers and art centers. And I am here today with others who value these services because of the quality of programs and the educational resources that they provide to our children, our elderly, our unemployed, and the community at large. As a fiscal conservative, I have never in my life actively campaigned or voted for a tax increase. I am standing here today to ask that you vote for the 1.7 millage rate increase so that we can preserve our quality of life in Cobb County. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and friends. My name is Pamela Reardon. I've lived in East Cobb since 1999. I'm a Realtor. I'm a concerned citizen, and I'm First Vice Chair of the Cobb County Republican Party. I have many concerns with just increasing the budget in every category, straight across, blindly, without zero-based budgeting or an audit, and then having a media campaign that you have to cut libraries, parks, senior citizens, facilities, and animal control. There is a lot of pork in these county expenses, and things can all be done more efficiently. Items have been addressed many times before by concerned citizens, so I'm not going into those, where we have a lot of spending occurring. Everyone has to understand that these facilities are not going to be cut, and it was just a campaign to get you up in arms about it. There seems to be a mysterious hole that has never really been explained, and the numbers keep changing magically. Now we find out that the chairman has possibly signed a memo of intent of 500 million or more to buy a tent city project or buy into it in Cobb County. This would only be the beginning of another major black hole of taxpayers' money. There has been no transparency, which was touted at the six town hall meetings. This is another collusion tenement to the likings of the collusion with the Braves stadium. The citizens have not been involved in this project, and it has been done in secret. Last month, 12 families, just last month, 12 families, lost their homes in Cobb County due to tax liens because they couldn't pay their taxes. This is before an increase, which the chairman wants. How many more will lose their homes in the future because of the tax increase? Oh, maybe the chairman has in mind and has planned the homeless tent city so the seniors and the others who lose their homes can move into the homeless tents. Our beautiful, low-tax county will become like San Francisco, buried in refuge and human feces. Buyers will not come to Cobb County, and residents will leave. This will erode your goldmine of tax base. I ask that all conservative Republicans sitting in front of me tonight, remember what your values are with fiscal constraint, transparency, and no tax increases, which all of you ran on. Vote no on the millage rate increase. Go back to work, get a budget, and live within your means, because there's plenty of money from the tax digest and the increased property values and the evaluations that have been going up on the property in Cobb County. The abundance is there-
Thank you for your remarks, ma'am.
...and the budget. Do it without cutting amenities and cutting waste instead. Do you want a copy of mine?
My name is Connie Taylor, and I live in District 4. I am here to let you know that I am in favor of the tax increase. We in District 4 have a lot of things that we need done as relates to it. You go up and down our roads, there's a lot of trash. Cobb County is a beautiful city. I moved here, or sorry, I say beautiful county. I moved here in 1999. I moved here because it reminded me of where I was raised, in San Diego. And it was a, it's a beautiful city then, and Cobb is still a beautiful city now, but we are a dirty city right now. We are dirty because we don't have the resources to make sure that our roads are clean. We also don't have the resources to ensure that we have our public safety individuals there. There was time when I would go down the road, and I would see a public safety individual come up and down the road. Now I have to go look for them, instead of them looking for the crime. So I ask that you please increase this. And one thing that I ask that you do do, if you increase this, do not come back to us next year and ask us for another increase, because you told us that this will do it. We do not want to see you again next year. Thank you.
Hello. I don't know if I can follow that.
I'm sorry. I forgot to thank you.
My name is Susan Raven. I live at 3303 Cochise Drive, which is in Atlanta, but it's in Cobb County. So, and I've lived in Cobb County since 1987. So I guess my biggest issue is, first of all, I very much support the police. I support the libraries. I support all the services Cobb County offers. I don't want to see those cut. But I do feel that there's a disconnect between talking about the floating homestead exemption that 52% of the people in the county enjoy. You enjoy it on your private residence. If you have rental property, or you have a second home, or anything like that, you don't get homestead exemption. So therefore, you're hit both with an increase in property values, plus the increase in the millage rate, plus the increase in, as other people have mentioned, the school board tax, the water, all of that. It all adds up to a sizable amount. We do have a few rental properties. We're not big property management people, but we have made it a practice of when we had good tenants, because we have these as long-term investments, that we don't, never go up on the rent on good tenants. We have some tenants that have lived there 12 years, and their rent is the same. Matter of fact, on a couple of cases, we've gone down because they've been through a divorce- Matter of fact, on a couple of cases, we've gone down because they've been through a divorce or have lost a job or something where we tried to treat these people as friends. And if we can help them, we can. But obviously, there's a cut, cut our loss thing because we're retired, and this is our income. And so I don't want this millage increase to force us to go up on rent on our tenants. And when you look at 48% of the people not being entitled to homestead exemption, a lot of those are people who live in rental properties because the apartments or homes they live in will be increased. So in some ways, we may be taxing the lowest people that can afford it the least because if they can't afford to buy their own home and they're renting, then, and they're forced to pay a higher rent, well, then who are we hurting? So anyway, I would just like your consideration. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Marissa Geiger. I'm a resident of East Cobb. My family and I moved here eight years ago. Our daughter's active in the theater and arts, and we wanted to provide her with the best opportunities. So we chose Cobb because of their amazing schools and the amazing, the amazing resources that you have here. Cobb has good programs, good schools, known for having a knack for the arts. At the time, much of Cobb was a bit out of our price range. We had to cut back, tighten our belts. I had to stop buying wine on Friday. And we managed to get a great home in East Cobb. We raised our daughter through middle school and high school. My daughter swam at the local aquatic center. She borrowed books from the local library. She acted in plays at the Art Place. And she stole her first kiss at a local park on a hot southern evening with fireflies around her. During the summer, she would hop on her bike in the morning and ride from the aquatic center to the parks, to her grandmother's, to the Art Place, over to Brewster's for a cool-off Sunday, and back home before the streetlights came on. This was a picturesque southern childhood that we had hoped we could give her. To paint the same picture without the millage increase, this park that she had that first special kiss in, it's unmanned and overgrown and a haven for shady dealings. This amazing aquatic center that she splashed around in all summer, it's a dilapidated building that's overgrown. And this Art Place that had thousands of children pass through its doors and was once lively and active and changed lives is nothing but a hollow shell. The millage rate increases the cost of a good bottle of wine once a month. I love my wine. I have an 18-year-old daughter. But once again, I'll give it up to pay this amount for the facilities and resources like the Art Place, the public libraries, groups like YELLS and animal control. A nation that's facing divided times, we must maintain facilities that allow us to bridge that divide and come together to enjoy things that make us American. A few weekends ago, I sat outside under a starry southern sky with a couple dozen other families eating a burger on the lawn with my 70-year-old parents while my 18-year-old daughter performed onstage at the Art Place. Please don't take away this opportunity for future generations. I'm for the millage increase. Thank you.
Could I, could I have a copy of your speech? Could I have a copy of your speech? Seriously, could I have a copy of it? Just email it to me. I appreciate it. That was very well done. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gary Barnett. I'm 75 years old. I've lived here for 34 years. I'm a retired business executive. What I'd like to be able to do is take a couple of perspectives, reinforce some of the things that some previous speakers already talked about. From a business standpoint, I've heard several people say, and I can say, even though I have a very nice home, I think the increase that I'm being asked for, for the 1.07 millage is minimal. I support it completely and enthusiastically. If I look at simply something like the library system, we have a population here of about 750,000 in the county, and 60% of our population have library cards, and they use those cards. I mean, this library provides over $70 million worth of value to the county. And this, we look at it from a humanitarian perspective, these are things that people want to have for their children, for people who are unemployed wanting to look for work using the computer system, for people who are there simply to increase the quality of their lives. And what we need to be able to do is to consider the fact that when I moved here 34 years ago, and I, like many others who have talked before me, we love this county, and I still do. And I want it to be exactly what it's always been. And I appreciate the county's taken a backward step in millage rates when we needed it during this horrible decade and before that we've had, starting in the year 2000. But now it's time for us to keep this county strong and keep it really where it should be. The only thing I also want to say besides that is, is that the library system only uses about 3% or less of the budget and provides all that value. And when we look at things like the police department, our fire protection, and we look at all those things that we need to keep us strong and keep us viable, I don't know how we can turn this down, just as simple as raise. It's really important. It's really needed. Thank you.
Good evening. To the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, my name is Harriet Locke. I'm a resident here in Cobb County. I'd like to take this opportunity tonight to ask the Board of Commissioners to please keep the libraries in the communities. We are in need of good libraries in Cobb County. And you know, there's a saying, "If you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything." Well, I'm standing for the libraries tonight because we need them. Our children need them. The seniors need them. And your staff at the libraries are very helpful, very good professionals. Even sometimes, I may get on their nerves. But they are still professional and helpful to everyone there that I witness that is in need of help with the computer world and the digital world like myself. When no one else had the time to help me to get update, the library was there, is there. And I'm asking you, because of the illiteracy in the world today with the children, got to understand and read. I'm the president of a nonprofit working with underprivileged children. And the literacy is there, but they need to get back into learning about reading and books and how the value of books are important. But I'm at your mercy tonight, Board of Commissioners, for the library, because when I go back, they won't let me live it down. But I would ask you once again, please don't take the libraries out of the communities. Thank you.
Good evening. Debbie Fisher. I live in East Cobb and have been a resident of Cobb since 1986. I have to say, I've never been more disillusioned by the judgment of our Board of Commissioners than I am now. I've always been proud to live in Cobb County and how it was governed until now. I'm anything but proud. I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed for blindly trusting in promises made but broken, putting my faith in what a person said, not what he did. I'm ashamed I believed in you, Mr. Chairman, and not, I am not alone. We believe when you promised an open and honest government, lower taxes, smaller government, and when you proudly stated, "My word is my bond." You said you could find 10%. Anyone could find 10%. You didn't even find 1%. Honesty used to be part of the fiber of being a Marine and a Christian. Why aren't you telling these people the truth? Show us where in the budget there's a $30 million deficit. You can't because it doesn't exist. Mr. Chairman, you've not proven your case. You cherry pick data to support your cause. You talk about restoring services, but you didn't budget them. You talk about millage, but not the digest. You talked about population, but not the increase in the incremental revenue. You talked about people's property taxes, but not your own tax revenue. You, sir, misled the public by threatening to take away their stuff and misrepresenting the numbers. It was brilliant strategy, obviously, from hearing all these people tonight, but not very ethical. Which services did you restore? It wasn't those you threatened. Instead, you increased personnel by 15 million over last year for a total of 29 million in two years. What services benefited? It wasn't the police or the sheriff because that went in operation expense. It wasn't libraries or the 36 position for parks you talked about. How does part-time vacation in tent cities restore our services to pre-recession levels? Why aren't you questioning the $106 million in excess funds? Why aren't you Commissioners questioning all these numbers? The budget increase of $50 million, yet their tax revenue is 67. Can you tell me where to find the 17 million in your budget? Where's the 47 million in excess funds going for the 2018 budget? After seven town halls and two hearings, the truth is yet to be told. People were purposely led, and by the silence of you four Commissioners in not challenging these numbers, you're complicit.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
I ask you to vote no.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hughes. I live in Vinings. I've lived there since 2005. I have two focuses. For the last three years, I've served on the Cobb County Library Foundation Board, and that's given me access to a lot of people who use the libraries. And as you heard from two speakers ago, there are a lot of people that maybe can't afford computers, that don't have access to buying books, and are working real, real hard to improve their lives. And our libraries allow them to do that. And I think it's the, I look at it as an investment where people can bring themselves up, in some cases, buy their bootstraps and improve their lives. The second thing I'm involved is with the police force. I'm on the Citizens Committee with Precinct Three, and we get together every several months, give them feedback from the community, and gives us access to the officers. And you hear a lot of times kind of off, more informal conversations of what they're thinking. And the gentleman that spoke about the, again, the need to increase their pay, the need to, you know, stay competitive with surrounding communities, I certainly hear that from officers. And again, if there's anything that we need to keep our mind on is public safety. So again, I am a lifelong conservative, speaking for the first time to increase my taxes, and I look at it as an investment in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Jason Shepherd. I live on Benjamin Court in Marietta. Last night, rather than attending various victory parties for our candidates, the members of the Cobb, the County Committee of the Cobb County Republican Party, the governing body of the Republican Party in our county, met and passed a resolution I am about to present. They gave up their evening in celebrations because they won the voices of the thousands of Cobb County Republican voters they were elected to represent, heard. As Chairman of the Cobb County Republican Party, I'm honored to deliver that resolution. A resolution encouraging the Cobb County Board of Commissioners to exercise fiscal restraint, whereas Cobb County taxpayers experience tremendous benefits from living in a county with an excellent quality of life, provided with a comparatively frugal burden on the taxpayers. And whereas the majority of Cobb County Commissioners identify themselves as Republican, a party whose platform endorses fiscal restraint and free market competition and discourages increasing taxes. And whereas our Cobb County taxpayers deserve a county government that prioritizes spending based on what is legally mandated, necessary, and contributes to a healthy balance of our low-tax environment and high quality of life. And whereas the Cobb County Republican Party believes the Cobb County government should only provide services not readily available in the private sector and which are not core services of local government, especially when facing a budget shortfall. And whereas our elected Cobb County Commission deserves commendation for giving citizens seven additional town halls to disclose the potential budget solutions advocated by the chairman beyond the statutory required hearings. And whereas the Cobb County Commission faces a difficult and daunting task in the face of structural deficits, bond ratings, and quality of life issues that impact Cobb County. But whereas, sorry, there has been several examples identified of waste in Cobb County government spending, and no operational audit of the county government has been performed, nor any reductions in spending proposed at the town hall meetings hosted by the chairman. But many increases in spending have been proposed, including, according to the Marietta Daily Journal, new spending on tent city concept and a tax increase that would be an undue burden on the community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Cobb County Republican Party County Committee this 24th day of July 2018 that we encourage our Cobb County Board of Commissioners to exercise the greatest degree of thoughtfulness and thoroughness in developing a county budget which keeps our taxes low and even lowers them further as our residents have come to expect and balances the budget by reducing spending, divesting from all business-type enterprise activities which provide services readily available from the private sector, and reducing expenditure on core, non-core services. And be it further resolved that we encourage our Cobb County Board of Commissioners to operate within their means to maintain a high credit rating from independent agencies to avoid further tax burden being placed on the backs of Cobb County taxpayers. And be it further resolved, we encourage our Cobb County Board of Commissioners to do all that is required to identify and eliminate wasteful spending from the county budget by conducting an operational audit and implementing and using professional techniques such as Lean Six Sigma.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
And/or implementing programs to improve efficiency and redundancy. Thank you very much. And it's a copy of the resolution.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm Carol Brown, a 30-year resident of District Three. I want to speak in support of the 1.7 millage increase. We need the parks, libraries, senior centers. And there are some other things that are essential that need to be funded as well. I understand that our police force is down by 112 officers from the recommended level. We are authorized to hire 52, but we can't hire them because nobody wants to come here because of the pay and the benefits. And we need an additional 60 on top of that. Our DOT is down by 70 employees from the recession. It's never been restored. And it's not just the right-of-way that isn't mowed on a regular basis. It's the potholes that took my neighborhood two years to get repaired. These are real problems. These aren't just things that are nice to have. I urge you to do the right thing and support the millage increase tonight. Thank you.
Before I ask this young lady to speak, can I ask those who still want to speak, please stand up? I just want to get a rough idea how many more want to speak here. Okay, what we're going to do after, after she speaks, we're going to take a short five-minute break, okay? Maybe seven minutes. 1.7, that's right.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Stephanie Carmen, and I'm an attorney with Cobb W. Wade. I'm a resident of District Two, and I'm here to ask you to vote yes to the millage rate increase. I have been a resident of Cobb County off and on for 23 years. I grew up here, graduated from high school here, and moved back here six years ago after moving around the country with my husband due to his military career. We purchased our first home here in District Two. When we moved back, we looked at other areas and decided Cobb was still the best county to live in. We love the services that it has to offer. Since moving here, we've had two kids. We want to raise them here, and we want them to have access to the same services that we grew up with. We want them to have the same quality of life that we grew up with. I believe a millage rate increase is necessary to make this happen, and I encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take a short break.
Okay, I appreciate everybody getting settled here. So with that, podium is now open to the next speaker. Remember to let us know who you are and where you live in three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Edwin Hunderdos. I live in East Cobb. I stand in front of you to be in favor of the millage increase. I have been for 12 years the president of Cobb County Soccer Council, making sure that we have good parks open to play the game. I'm also part of the Cobb Sports Alliance, which has been very instrumental in getting more and more tournaments to Cobb County. By being able to have good parks, and we've made major improvements with the eight fields that have now turfed fields, we can offer to groups outside the county our great fields and parks. That does is we get hotel rooms, we get people coming to Cobb County, we get meals, we get gas tax. All that adds up to having fantastic county fields and parks. Without that, these groups will go to Fulton County, Gwinnett County, or counties out of Georgia. So keeping those parks open in very good shape is very important. At this point in Georgia, Cobb County is the largest county that has soccer attendance among youth and adults. And we stand out for that. So I really want you to consider that, that if we do not pass the millage rate, and the parks might be closed, and park employees might be let go, then we have issues that reach further than all the gains we have made with the Cobb County Soccer Council and the Cobb Sport Alliance. So I beg you, please vote for the millage rate increase. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Beverly Campbell, and I realize that I'm senior here in a lot of ways. We moved to Cobb County in 1980, have raised our children here, and still enjoy all the benefits. I am here to vote in favor of the millage rate. Certainly, even though my husband and I are retired and on fixed income, we can afford the $15 or $16 it's going to cost to give all these advantages to so many people. I vote in favor of a millage rate increase.
Good evening, if it is a good evening. My name is Frank Maleski, and I'm with the East Cobb. And I've been a resident of East Cobb since 1985 A.D. I live alone, if you count myself and five cats, I live alone. And I'm retired, as a research chemist, and also a veteran. And I look at things a little bit differently from everybody was talking about. First of all, I'm going to start a business printing library cards. It seems everybody wants one, so I'm going to get a business stamping those laminated library cards out, and I'll make a fortune, and I'll be able to pay this massive tax increase. But I'm coming from a different angle here. As a conservative, I look at government holistically, all of government. And I'm retired, and I have two streams of income, a minimum required distribution from my 401K IRA, and my Social Security. Now, I pay federal income tax. I pay state income tax. I pay tax on my required minimum distribution from my IRA. I pay Social Security tax on my Social Security. I pay 6% sales tax here in Georgia. I have a SPOLOX tax from the county, an education tax from the county. I have a tax on my energy bill, couple. I have a tax on my AT&amp;T U-verse. There's three of them, and I don't even know what they're for. 10% of my water bill is taxed, taken by the county, just taken. I have a tax on my capital gains within the mutual fund that I have. I have a tax, a friend of mine came into town. He stayed at Best Western. And there was a federal tax, a state tax, a county tax, and hotel motel tax. Every time I buy a gallon of gasoline, 80, 90% of the price of a gasoline is taxed, is that right? And there's a penny in there someplace for the state. I have a tax on a can of Heinz baked beans. Today I bought one, and there was a tax on that. So I know we live in a little bubble here. We're only looking at one aspect of county government. There's a hole someplace, we have to fill it, we have to raise taxes. But I'm looking at it from an entire picture of what I pay for government. And I'm asking government at all levels, federal, state, county, local, you name it, cut spending and do what's essential that we need to be done with what you have. Because right now, I just can't afford to pay for any more government.
Hi, I'm Beth Mitchell, and I believe you all received an email from me today. You already know how I feel, so I just want to publicly announce that I'm in favor of the millage rate. Thank you.
My name is Orlando Orchino, and I've been a Cobb County resident since 1996, approximately 22 years. Commissioners, I am against the out-of-control spending and the resulting taxation being proposed by Chairman Mike Poise. Taxpayers like me can't afford to keep paying for any more wasteful government spending and are giving away money needlessly like the $1.8 million tax break that Tyler Perry got simply to keep his private jet in Cobb County. It is time to get back to basic and spending money within the county's existing budget. A few examples of not being prudent with county's existing budget are as follows. Pardon, I'm a little nervous, sir. Passing a new salary scale approved last year with an increase with increased the county debt slash payroll by more than $10 million. Just that unwise decision by this board is 1/3 of the $30 million you are now short regarding the warning of the agency referenced at Tripway Crediting Rating. Another unwise disregard to keeping within the county's existing budget was the purchase of parkland yielding to another $3 to $5 million of year debt. Then there is the construction of the Civil Mill Library and Culture Center that this board did not budget for the cost of operation but funded by SPOLOX. Then the Braves Stadium annual cost of $8 million a year, which is a known cost, this board continues to spend money, apparently with no regard that it has a budget to stay within. These are but a few facts that are public knowledge, demonstrating how this board, by their own action, by your own action, appears to have no empathy for its citizens' financial hardship and/or required needs to keep within our budget. You were elected to make the tough choices required to reduce the size and scope of the county's government so that it could live within its means and provide only the necessary services. As to the essential and desired services that you have spoken at the previous town hall meeting, they too need to be provided, but keeping within the existing budget. But apparently by your action of recklessly spending money, this board appears to think it can do it by just raising the Cobb County counties' residents' taxes with no regard to its citizens' limited budget. It appears by your action that this board just does not care how much or how many innocent citizens it hurts financially, just as long as you get what you want or desire. Therefore, I insist that you vote no on any millage rate that is above the calculated rollback rate and to vote no on any budget that increased spending. By voting no, this board would demonstrate to the Cobb County citizens that you not only truly respect the citizens' opinions, but more importantly, you care for the citizens that voted you as Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Susan Hyke, and I live in West Cobb. And thank you for letting us come up here and speak. I know there are a lot of people here who are concerned about our parks and libraries being closed and are therefore supporting the 1.7 mil increase. I attended the town hall meeting at West Cobb Senior Center a couple of weeks ago. And Chairman, you did state that closing schools and parks would not happen. The way that came about, as you had explained it to us there, was staff was asked to list areas where money could be saved. And they had come up with closing libraries and parks and other things. But you assured us on that night that that would not happen. Now, I'm not sure if you said that would not happen if you raised the mills 1.7, but the impression I came away with on that night that regardless of the millage rate increase, parks and libraries will not close. So I think maybe I need personally some clarification, but it sounds like they're not going to close.
Just help you out. 1.1 mil will keep everything open, okay? I've asked for 1.7 for additional services, including restoring library hours. And obviously, the board still has to decide what millage rate they're going to decide on here. So whatever the millage rate to decide on after this period is closed, that will decide what will keep open and what we may not keep open. So it's really in the hands of the board. Everyone on this board has to have three votes to do anything to happen. And that's why we're here tonight. Hope that helps.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Slomavitz, and I am an East Cobber. I just wanted to officially again take a moment to share my support of the 1.7 millage rate increase. And I stand here for Cobb libraries. It came in an interesting time, and restoring the lost hours. Over the last week, seeing some of the words that have been levied against some on this board, I have been shocked and I just don't understand. When your police are begging for funds, and when your Cobb children might lose their fire safety knowledge, you have to wonder what is going on. Library hours are down, so usage is down. That's how that works. I have stood here multiple times before, and many know what I think. But I just wanted again in this last meeting to support the 1.7 mil increase. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Randall Bedkitt. I'm a 38-year resident of Cobb County. I live at 2587 20th Drive. I have no mistake about what I'm going to say tonight is going to make any difference one way or the other. I would hope you already have your minds made up about the budget, and anything I say will not have any effect on it. I was here last year, and I told you that I believed in user fees. That's going to get a lot of boost from a lot of people. And you tried to do some user fees, I understand that. But what I want to talk to you about tonight is, and I talked to y'all before about this, about the SPOLOX funds. I told you excess SPOLOX funds could be used to pay down debt. And I was told, no, it couldn't. Well, the Artland Marietta paper this week said it could. SPOLOX is the biggest slush fund this county's got. And I'll give you an example of that. Last year, when we was talking about changing the fees on the parking garage, decided to do that, and I thought that was good. If you're going to use a parking garage, pay for it. If you go to the Wellstar, you're going to pay to park up there. But you used $90,000 to buy the equipment to take credit cards at the parking garage. And you used 2005 SPOLOX funds to do that. Now, 2005, when the SPOLOX was passed, nobody said anything about equipment for the parking garage. Nobody even used, parking garage fees are going to be raised. So, and I've seen other things come up too. I can't give you specific examples. I know one time they was wanting a foam truck up for the fire department, and when they came up and asked for that, they was going to buy it from Pauley County, and we're going to use SPOLOX funds from 2010 or some year, I forgot what year it was. Then they came back and wanted another foam truck. And so they used SPOLOX funds again. Now, when those SPOLOXs were passed, there was nothing in there. And that's what's wrong with SPOLOX. It's painted in such a wide brush that there'll never be any excess funds because y'all use them for everything under the sun. I'd like to see you pay off the $8 million on the parking garage. That would save a quarter of a million dollars a year in interest. There's two things that people don't realize. You got the fire fund, and I think it's 3.9 or 3.8, somewhere along that line, 2.96. Okay, and you also have the bond, the bond fund. I think that's .31 or something like that. Yeah, okay. So those are outside the floating home state exemption. Every time you have an increase in the assessed value...
Thank you for your comments, sir. That's your time.
And just to help you out, we have, part of the proposal tonight is to lower the fire fund by 10.
Yeah, I know, but it's just a token.
I know, but I just want to let you know that we've heard you. So the fact that you stand up here, your voice does count. I just wanted to reassure you.
Larry Wills, 60, Oakmont Drive, Marietta, Georgia. Some of you know that I follow government pretty closely. What I'm hearing in all this is that both sides pretty much agree that there is some sort of financial crisis going on here. One side wants to throw money at the problem. The other side says that continuing to throw money at the problem is the crisis. I think that every crisis such as this one has a history. And I think I've heard both sides say that there have been some mistakes made in the past that have brought us to this crisis point in the budget. And I think there's just a difference of opinion of how to solve the problem. Spend more money, or draw a line in the sand and say, "Government can't go on spending like this without creating a dangerous economic bubble that's going to burst pretty soon." I have a house I bought in 1972. It was our first house, I kept it. And we rented the friends and family. It's two blocks from the house I live in. Paid $18,000 for it in 1972, '73. It's now valued over $30,000. Last year, they raised the assessment on it by $62,000 in one whack. My brother-in-law lives a couple of blocks over. They raised his house value by over $80,000 in one whack. So I kind of fall into the side that believes there is a spending crisis with government that's creating a bubble. The value of this house is back above the housing bubble value of it. And I think the problem is that the politicians and the leadership in this county has lost a lot of credibility. I think the election yesterday showed that. And for me, the credibility started with the SPOLOX program, which was supposed to reduce property taxes.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Well, anyway, is my time up?
Thank you very much.
Well, the bottom line is, I think before you vote on this, we need a forensic audit by an outside agency to find out who's credible and who's not, and who's telling the truth and who's not. So I would delay the vote until we get some sort of definitive answer on where this crisis started.
Sir, we've been more than patient with you, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kevin Moss, West Cobb resident. Tonight, we decide in part on what type of county we want to be. On one hand, we can decide to not increase the millage rate. We'll probably lose our AAA bond rating and have increased borrowing costs in the future. We'll continue to operate an unsustainable repaving deficit of county roads. We'll not fill potholes or mow mediums fast enough. We'll not begin to replace an aging public safety fleet, and we'll lose the best and brightest county employees to surrounding cities and counties that offer higher salaries. Or we can support the chairman's millage increase. We'll add more police officers to keep the county safe. We'll give them the equipment they need to do their job, which includes new cars and body cameras. We'll keep our AAA bond rating and remain only one of, I believe, 47 counties nationwide that enjoy that status. And by doing so, we'll save the county millions of dollars in the future with lower borrowing costs. And most importantly, we'll send a strong message to county employees that we as a county stand by you, we support you, and we want to give you the resources you need to do your job. The last county millage rate increase for the general fund occurred in 2011, and we've gained about 75,000 residents since then. County budgets have been frozen since then. So for seven years, we've asked county employees to get by with less, with no additional resources, with more demand for services from more county residents. And by the way, we're going to pay you less than what you could otherwise earn for the same work in a neighboring city or county. Let's also consider that everything costs more in 2018 than it did in 2011, from health insurance premiums to equipment and supplies and the natural rate of inflation. Quite simply, we can't expect to keep and maintain the same level of services without increasing the millage rate. Let's send a strong message tonight that we support the work our county employees perform. Let's tell a story to businesses that are considering to relocate to Cobb that we've got the best and brightest here in the county, and that our county provides five-star services to residents. I strongly encourage the board to support chairman's proposal. Thank you.
All right, James Gantner, live in Kennesaw. Been here, God, 12 years, I think. I lived in Tampa for three years, and it seemed a lot longer than 12. All right, so nobody likes to pay taxes. Nobody opens up their tax bill and says, "Hey, this is awesome, this is great." And nobody wants to provide the services until they need them. Like if somebody's water line busts at 2:00 in the morning on a cold morning, do we just wait till like 8, 9 a.m.? Oh, they'll be in the morning? No. Some guy making $13.85 an hour goes out there in the middle of the night, dragging his butt and saying, "Okay, where's this at, where's this at?" And if they need to fix it, it's on the county side, they fix it. Now, I grew up in Dayton, Ohio. Dayton, Ohio is not the greatest place in the world. See, y'all know, y'all know this. It looks a lot like, when I moved here, it looked a lot like East Point. And y'all know what East Point looks like. That's exactly what it reminded me of when I first went there. So I know really bad places to live. And I know that this is not one of them. This is a great county. Me and my wife bust our butts every single day to make sure my daughter, my 10-year-old daughter, lives in this county, goes to school in this county, and make sure that she has the best education possible that we can afford. And I know that with teacher salaries, public safety salaries, county employee salaries, you know, they're kind of frozen. This millage rate, I really feel, in the deepest of my heart, is needed as an increase. Thank you.
As much as I appreciate the frankness, I just, as a matter of policy, I don't like to compare ourselves to anybody else outside the county. So just saying. But I get your point, I just, I don't want to have a letter from the mayor tomorrow. So thank you, I apologize.
That's okay. My name is Patricia Zoha. I had a budget every week, every month, I'm sorry. This is a simple book, really simple. That's the money that I spend. That's the money that it come into my house, that's how I spend it. I don't play with anybody else's money because I don't have more. I only had to have a budget. And if you don't know what is coming into your house, how you know what is going into your house? It's easy to play with somebody else's money when actually people had to give it to you. You know, we can spend, we can make projects, but until we get a budget, we don't know what we have. We have to be accountable for what it come in this county. We had to have a budget. If you need paper and pencil and a little book like this to know how much money in this county is, because this county is a great county, and it's a lot of money in this county. People move in this county, but business move out too. If we don't have a budget, we can't know tax people because 200 or 300 for me in tax, it make a difference. I pay tax service, trash service, water, electricity. Sometimes I had this little thing about, "Don't waste water" because water costs money. It's not only the water, it's the electricity, it's everything. So unless I had a budget, I don't know what I had to work with. So I consider the youth, as a public official, you have a responsibility to let us know where the tax cuts can be done and where we can get extra money to get these projects. But until we get a budget, we don't going to guessing what money we had to play or what money we had to put in our house. So thank you very much, consider that. I'm a single taxpayer here with a little booklet. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Commissioners, Chairman. My name is Nathan Adams. I'm from South Cobb in Mableton. I also happen to be the executive director of Georgia Taxpayers United. We're an issue advocacy group that fights on behalf of taxpayers all across the state of Georgia. We have hundreds, if not thousands, of members here in Cobb. Seems like deja vu, I was just here last summer collecting petitions across the county to fight a tax hike. Luckily, last summer, the commission decided to vote down the initial tax hike, but adopted a smaller one in its place. So here we are again. I've went out and collected more petitions for more of my neighbors who just can't afford to pay for your good ideas. So I'll read as quickly as possible the petition into the record. Whereas every increase in government spending must be paid for with a corresponding increase in taxes, and whereas local politicians at each level of local government have a fiduciary responsibility for their respective government budgets, spending, and revenues, taxes, and whereas, as candidates, local politicians ask for our votes, our contributions, and therefore the responsibility to make tough choices required to cut spending and taxation, not to deflect responsibility and blame to the citizens they represent. And whereas property taxes drive up the cost of living for all residents, including renters, who must bear the cost indirectly in order for their landlords to remain solvent. And whereas property taxes turn private property owners into mere renters from local government living under the threat of violence and eviction should they be unable to pay the tax. Therefore, we insist that our local representatives take responsibility to cut wasteful spending... take responsibility to cut wasteful spending and to cut property taxes. And a few volunteers are going to come up and help me deliver the petitions. Leave me here? Okay, thank you.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you. My name is Kyle Cornelius, and I live in West Cobb. And I am here in hopes, to express my support for the 1.7 mil increase. We're at a point in history where a tough decision needs to get made. And there might need to be cuts, but it is no question that the millage rate has to increase because we have to balance the budget, and you can't do it from cutting it alone. Thank you.
Getting worried, Lance.
I know, I know. This is the moment you were waiting for, right, Mike? My name's Lance. I'm from Mostel. I don't even know where to start.
Said you're going to finish the SPOSS oversight committee report.
Maybe from the beginning. Maybe from the beginning. This is an old campaign.
Okay.
I think one thing you may not be aware of is how deep-seated and unpopular this tax increase is among the citizens of Cobb County. You don't get a fair representation.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
You don't get a fair representation of that.
Lance, Lance, one second. First, I want to apologize to you. This man has every right to make these comments, like you all did. So please, respect him, all right? I ask for some civility here. So again, I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
Matter of fact, restart the clock. Restart the clock.
Wow.
No, you deserve that.
I appreciate that, Mike. I really do. I don't think that what you're hearing at hearings like this is representative of the popular opinion regarding this tax increase. A lot of special interests and special pleading interests will come to you because they have a pet project that they're in favor of. So you get a jaundiced view of what the reality is. The Americans for Prosperity, over the past week, have been going door to door, and they've been knocking on the doors saying, do you know about this tax increase? The overwhelming majority of citizens in Cobb County don't even know it's looming here right now. And then we found out that over 90% of the people who were made aware of this looming tax increase are opposed to it. So I want you to consider the opinions of the people. Obviously, the election results last night, I think, was a barometer of public opinion. And that's something that you need to pay attention to. And I just want to make my final remark on this. Is that I think that there's an arrogant assumption that government knows better how to spend my money than I do. And Commissioner Cupid, I was very offended by your remarks last week. They were rude, they were condescending, and I didn't appreciate it. And let me finish.
Excuse me, chairman.
Let me say something, Mrs. Cupid.
Your comments are supposed to be directed to the chair, not to individual commissioners.
You're supposed to address the board only.
Okay.
If you have any comments for Commissioner Cupid.
I understand.
All right. You have to do it one-on-one with her, okay?
But we have a program in South Cobb where people get free movie nights. Now, why should taxpayers be paying for free movies? There's a word in the English vocabulary for that kind of behavior. It's called theft. It's legalized theft, but it's theft nonetheless. Don't take our money. Leave our money alone. We know better how to do with it than you do. Thank you.
Okay. Going once, going twice, I know.
My name's Stephen Boulding. I live in the city of Marietta. I grew up in the city of Marietta. Went to Park Street Elementary School for eight years. Went to Meredith High School for a while. They let me out early in the 11th grade to join the Marine Corps, I am opposed to paying higher taxes. I'm a homeowner. I'm a business owner. You have to live within a budget. I ask y'all to live within a budget, to not raise taxes, to look at the county's spending and see what you can do to not raise taxes on us. It's tough in the marketplace. Yes, the economy is good, but it's tough. We pay enough taxes. Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Board, I'm Kelly Johnson, South Cobb. I'll be brief. I did not want to or do not want to give you the spiel of how you should vote or how you should decide to spend the money. What I'm wanting to do is to ask you to consider not what you can cut, but what you can generate. And to that, I speak from the intersection of personal experience and its military. And I present an idea or a suggestion for you to consider, to which I've heard about Tyler Perry's jet. In that sense, or with respects to aviation, perhaps you can explore your connections with the aviation community and generate an invoice for aircraft that fly way too low. I should not hear the hydraulics of an aircraft working when I'm in my yard. I should not be able to read the letters on an aircraft when I'm in my yard. And that is just an example of asking you to think about what you can generate. I have other ideas. Perhaps I'll, you know, refer to my respective commissioner. But again, it's just, you know, all I'm hearing, all I'm hearing is cut this, save that. I think in most households, most people think about what can they do to generate more income to help the budget. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, with that, I now declare this public hearing closed. And we're going to start with the comments from the board members, and I'll start with Commissioner Rock.
We seem to start at this end.
Sorry?
There he goes.
Because I made the decision we're going to start at that end. That's simple.
Sitting here tonight and listening to the many people that have voiced both support for the increase and non-support, it's time to tell you my perspective on this millage increase and the budget. I can't support the proposed millage increase or budget because I don't believe it looks for efficiencies or cuts before calling for a tax increase. I am disappointed in how the need for a tax increase has been presented. Putting forward to the residents the closing of the busiest parks, the busiest libraries, extension services, 4H, and master gardeners, this tugged on the heartstring of all the residents, young and old, and the mission became save us. And the focus was off what the budget is really made of. I too have had many emails and calls. Not a day goes by where I get into work and there are another batch of emails. I'm not here to tell you the ratio of those that are for, those against. But here is my takeaway. When I write back to them and call them back, I explain my position. I tell them that the services that are being threatened to be taken away were never proposals. It came before this board. Why would the board continue to buy more park space if the intent was to close parks? Why are new libraries being built only to close them? What I have told them, and I will tell you now, I am not for raising this millage rate to 1.7. I am not for the proposed budget, and here's why. Back in 2016 SPOSS proposal, the board collectively worked on a list to put into the voters. I first rejected the idea of having a SPOSS for six years because it would be hard to project what the county's real needs would be that far out. As a result of this six-year SPOSS that passed, I now have no more money for sidewalks. There is not enough money to take care of deteriorating roads, and the county can't even get them on a cycle for repaving. And we are only near two. I proposed in the 2016 SPOSS at $9 million additional dollars to buy the police even more new vehicles than originally proposed. This was removed to pay for others' wants of things, not the needs of the county. I even agreed to less money for District 2 sidewalks to pay for these cars, and I was turned down. So why am I talking about this SPOSS? It's a done deal. I am talking about it because this is how this budget, in my opinion, was created. When we had the retreat in October, Commissioner Weatherford and I came up with on our own a way to save $50 million out of this budget. Some of my proposals were to consolidate the libraries that are underused, outsource some of the departments at the county, and to work on transportation to run fewer buses that would run at capacity, and to look at the utilization of Uber and Lyft vouchers to take people to the main lines of the fixed routes. None of our proposals or plans are included in this budget. To all county staff, I value you and want to thank you for what you and your efforts do for the citizens here in Cobb. I will never agree to take what you have earned and put into your pension, but this pension plan has to change. It is simply not sustainable in its current form. I proposed a change four years ago. The pension is at its worst unfunded level it has ever been. Many companies have changed their pension programs, large multi-billion-dollar companies that were hit hard in the recession have, but not Cobb. I proposed in this budget discussion to stop funding this type of pension. This does not mean that the employees lose what they put into their plan. It will be there when you retire, but the county needs to move into a 401K plan where the county can put in a percentage and the employees can put in money that they feel is appropriate to reach their goal in retirement. The money will be yours and in your name. The worst vote I have ever taken was when, a year ago, I voted yes for the paying class. I do not feel this was fully vetted out. It was a rush job to get it to a vote. I do not believe the staff had the time to really address the implementation and the impact, but most importantly, who really benefited. Now, we have a reoccurring cost of a flawed plan, and we must continually make significant financial adjustments for a fair compensation to positions not originally covered under the plan. These adjustments just keep adding to the overall cost of the plan. This proposed 2019 budget does not have any increases for staff, merit, or bonuses. In fact, it was stated by the chairman that this will be looked at in 2020 by taking the money that is paying for vehicles and reallocating it to staff salaries. This very statement or thought process helped me formulate my no vote for this budget. We have been kicking this car replacement plan down the road for so many years that we have depleted our fleet and has been costly to the county to maintain. And the statement that we can use as fleet maintenance money for bonuses or incentive money has perplexed, has me perplexed. Another item on this budget is the general fund admin and contingency. Most ask, why are there so many contingencies? How will they be used? Let's use the example of funding for more police. It is important to understand the difference between authorizing positions and allocating for these positions. When new positions are created in a budget, they are authorized by the board. It is not until money is allocated to each of these new positions can one expect to see new officers on the street. This budget authorizes the creation of 23 new police officers. It does not, however, allocate funds directly to fund the positions. Instead, it places the $2.6 million in the general fund admin and contingency bucket. Why is this important? If the funds were placed directly to fund the positions, it would require the board of commissioners to identify in an agenda item that a particular position was being unfunded if that money was to be used somewhere else. With the money placed in a contingency bucket, the agenda item would never need to tell you, the citizens, that a particular position was being unfunded. I'm sure you will be told that this will not happen. But consider the following scenario. On average, police and sheriff have 20 to 30 unfilled positions, which is very close to the 23 new officers being created in this budget. When positions go unfilled for the entire year, that money is now available to be spent somewhere else. Wouldn't you want to know that it was being removed from a police or a sheriff's spot versus the agenda item simply stating the money was coming from contingency? One final thought on the police. I don't believe this budget addresses the retention issues at the police and sheriff departments. What is really needed is a grade-and-step pay system similar to what is used in the military or our schools. Additionally, the county needs to give the police the same priority in the budget by creating the equivalent of a fire fund for police. Moving on to the libraries. It is simply not sustainable to move forward keeping all the existing libraries open. It is important to note that both the Citizens Oversight Committee and the Library Board of Trustees have recommended moving towards a regional library concept. Both studies were done prior to the existing population densities and new developments around the county, thus requiring a review of the assumptions used in the previous recommendations. It is clear, simply looking at geographic locations without considering population densities and usage of existing libraries, will not result in an acceptable alternative. Just closing libraries and building regional libraries is not the only solution that should be considered. For those areas that may lose their local library, the county could change the use of the closed libraries into a reading room or community space that could potentially provide rental income to the library system. Parks and Rec is another area that has come up numerous times during this budget discussion. I want to focus on the county parks, specifically the parks with nature trails and open space, not those with playing fields. As an example of changes that could be made, let's look at the Chattahoochee National Recreation Area, specifically the Cochran Shoals area along the river between Collins Drive and Powers Ferry. About six to eight years ago, the trails at Cochran Shoals were rutted, washed out, and there was a constant trash around the park. There wasn't any money to repair the restrooms or deal with the growing beaver population, which was flooding out many of the trails. To address the shortfall, the National Park Service instituted a parking fee in the lots at each end of the park. To allay people's fears of the money simply being collected and going back to Washington, the National Park Service adopted a policy that any money collected at the Cochran Shoals unit could only be spent at that location. Today, Cochran Shoals is one of the busiest recreation areas in the metro area with pristine trails, no washouts, and clean restrooms. The cost for this, $5 a day, or $40 a year. But there's more. If you are a senior, the cost is $20 a year or $80 for a lifetime. The result of these new fees has not been what you might think. Instead, the parking lots and trails are full of cyclists, runners, and walkers. Another big area of discussion has been the need for $16 million of vehicle replacements. Let me make clear my belief that all public safety vehicles should be new and are a high priority. The issue I see is the direction to take on the rest of the requested replacements. As the liaison commissioner with fleets, I have asked staff to explore purchasing rental fleet versus new vehicles. Many folks around the county and in this room know the value of purchasing used vehicles to save money. The average rental fleet replaces their cars at around 30,000 miles. The county generally keeps cars until they reach 200,000 miles or more. A rental car fleet would still have plenty of useful life. There are other factors that staff is still exploring. But before deciding on the best way to replace county vehicles, a full accounting of the county fleet needs to be completed. This review needs to not only identify what the county has, but who has them and why. The initial review would suggest not all vehicles are needed and don't need to be replaced. For example, the county has owned for quite some time two coach buses, which are hardly ever used but attract dust and require maintenance. They have been identified to be sold. Another way to reduce the replacement requirement and cost is to look into forming a county motor pool or a carpool fleet. These vehicles could be signed out at a department's expense when needed and would result in a reduction in the total vehicle count and man hours required for maintenance. As a part of SPOSS 2016, the voters approved a new vehicle maintenance facility that will increase the number of service pays. Currently, the county has a few in-sourced contracts to service other jurisdictions' vehicles. Although no additional personnel were requested when the DOT budget was brought forward to the chairman prior to the formulation of a budget, at the first hearing of the budget, four additional personnel were added. As the liaison commissioner to support services, I had told fleets that until they had secured more in-sourced contracts that could cover the cost of the additional personnel, they needed to wait before asking for them. Doing so would keep the extra personnel costs from adding to the general fund. So in closing, before this board is a budget not begun from cuts or reductions of duplication of services, but instead it began from a $21 million infusion of one-time money. Added on top of this are more employees, bloated contingency funds, and additional library hours, which adds more personnel, even though there has been a discussion of reviving the regional library plan next year. Commissioner Weatherford and I both identified potential cuts back in October, and most have been rebuffed since. Is my list the only answer? Of course not. Many have expressed concerns about my call to scale back animal services. I'll state it again, as I have in the past, nothing on my list is absolute. However, since I started with a .5 mil tax increase, if I add it back to .2 mils required to keep animal services as it is, I'm at .7 mils, not 1.7. Beyond that, I've stated my willingness to even consider other additions as long as the overall increase, along with the over 9% digest increase, are considered. The county's digest is at the highest level it has ever been. It is inconceivably to me the size of this tax increase. This budget and military requests remind me of SPOS 2016, full of wants and not of identifying the true needs. Maybe it should be called SPOS 2016, version two. To borrow a quote from William S. Buckley, sums up this tax increase in budget. Quote, "What do we care how much we, the government, owe so long as we owe it to ourselves? On with the spending, tax and tax, spend and spend, elect and elect." Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd first like to say thanks to all of the constituents and public here tonight and who have gone through this process with us from the town hall meetings to the public hearings, the emails, phone calls, everything that you've done to get your voice heard. And I appreciate it, whether you're for or against or in between. Thank you. I'd also like to say thank you to our finance team, our county manager, department heads, agency directors, staff, and the chairman for all the hard work and dedication, meetings after meetings, sleepless nights, everything we've done to go over this budget and to get us to the point where we can make a good decision tonight. And we've had some long discussions, meetings while looking at everything we could for savings and efficiencies. We've heard from both sides. And many, many folks that are passionate about a specific department, library, parks, 4-H extension, police, everything. And we've listened, we've heard you, and I appreciate your passion and your will and determination and also your courage to get up and speak in front of hundreds of people here and at home viewing on TV. There's been a lot of talk of how we got here. In 2016, all members of this board, with the exception of the chairman, voted to roll back the millage. And every one of us on here that agreed to that, it was a 5-0 vote, and we've all said we wish we hadn't. It was a mistake. But we did vote 5-0 to incur that debt. Last year, we did not raise taxes at all. We offered, I offered a compromise, which did not receive any support. Most of this board agreed that we would use one-time monies, and that pretty much delayed the inevitable. To get a head start on the budget process in October, we had a retreat where we bucketed services into mandated essential and desired categories. Those items in the desired category are not required by law. However, they do make up our quality of life and one of the many reasons why residents stay in Cobb and others are attracted and move here. In all those categories of mandated essential and desired categories, we must still be responsible stewards of taxpayers' money. This board received over 1,000 responses from residents via email, phone calls, and online. Just sorting through all that, there were almost 60% of respondents who do not support the proposed increase and 40 who did support it. As I stated, that was overall. As I stated, I conducted a tally of District Three residents. I received emails, phone calls, online responses, and as late as last night, a petition signed by close to 300 people in District Three in favor of the increase. And tonight, you see the petitions, I think maybe 500 or 600 in opposition in District Three alone. So over the 650 responses, 49% believe that we should have an increase and 36 disagree with an increase. 13% simply said they wanted to keep their facilities and services that we have and didn't offer yea or nay to the increase. I've heard from District Three constituents and I feel that a compromise is the best solution. As I've stated, I cannot agree to arbitrarily raising taxes for new services and expanded hours when we haven't consolidated services, cut any expenses where we can, and implemented reductions. I cannot support the 1.7-millage increase that's proposed here tonight. However, with a combination of cost reductions, consolidation, and increased revenues, I believe that a more modest increase of 1.2 to 1.3 mils is more reasonable. Regardless of what happens here tonight, I would like a commitment from the chairman and hopefully the board that at a minimum, we do the following moving forward. Bring back the regional concept of libraries, as Commissioner Ott said, and bring it back for a vote and be done with it once and for all. I think the chairman has mentioned that as well as a decision needs to be made once and for all from all the recommendations we've gotten. Implement a special service district for the police so that the tax commissioner and assessor can have time to prepare that for next year's millage. We can't do it now, but I understand that there's a work session scheduled for August to address that, and then we can bring it back to the board for a vote. I don't think it's fair for the police to be in the general fund when that's our number one priority and there are things that we approved two years ago that have not been funded for the police. And it's time that we made that our top priority and put our money where our mouth is, as I've said before, and separate the police as a separate millage so that they know they're secure in their funding and don't have to keep coming back for things that aren't funded for the police. I also want a commitment that we start back on the water transfer reduction and start a percentage incrementally each year to reduce it and quit transferring it to the general fund. We wouldn't have to have an increase as we just did last month. So that is another priority of mine as well. We have, I think, agreed that the fire fund would be reduced by .1 mils, and we did take the operations of the safety village, the 280,000, out of the general fund and moved it to the fire fund. I'd also like for the Compensation Committee to review our benefit structure and bring back recommendations to this board for savings. The Veterans Memorial that is in the budget, the 250,000, which we have committed and approved, is in the general fund, but I'd like to see that move to contingency. That kind of thing that's one-time money needs to come out of contingency, not general fund. And then also, there's been some discussions with the nonprofits. I'd like to see those come out of the general fund and start what is called a roundup program that individuals would voluntarily give on their water bill, round up their bill to the nearest dollar voluntarily to the nonprofits. Also, the county can host fundraisers for the nonprofits and get sponsors that way rather than it coming out of the general fund. And that's what I would like to see. So I'm offering a compromise. I don't know that I have any support for it again this year, but I can't support the full 1.7 mils. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, we've listened to a lot of people, and I'm not sure where some of the numbers are coming from. I know that in my office, that those that weren't coming from an outside funded group has been overwhelmingly in support of this militarizing increase. A lot of people here got up tonight and gave their opinions, and that's what this is about. Fortunately, someone gave their own facts, and they're not entitled to their own facts, just their opinions. After I lost the election last night, I reflected and I said, "What did I do wrong to do that?" And I decided it's what I did right that people don't like. That I made the hard choices, that I did what I say was going to do, that I stood up for this county. And we all up here have worked hard to look at this budget. And people that walk around handing out postcards saying "Call Bob", they haven't looked at this budget like we have. They haven't taken the time and the dedication to go through it line by line like each of us have. We all have different opinions. We all have issues that we think are need or whatever. The chairman began this, and we started in October last year, and he came up that we needed a 1.9 general fund increase. We worked together, I worked with the chairman, and he brought it down to 1.7 by finding savings and reductions. And a .1 mil reduction in the fire fund, which by the way, reduces against your assessed value, not your floating homestead exemption. As the liaison for the last four years was public safety, there's no one more committed to public safety than I am. I have the scars to prove it, including a metal knee. I've always supported public safety. I supported the take-home car program, shift differential and educational pay, step increases for lieutenants and sergeants so we could keep those valuable resources from going somewhere else. This proposed budget includes more positions for public safety, $15 million. It includes body cameras for all of them. It includes most of the vehicles we need. We need 200 of them. And public services, I've heard and listened, and most of the complaints are right-of-way maintenance, restoring regional library hours that I support and the consolidation plan that most of us have talked about. Not closing any of our parks or senior centers or anything like that that are used. In working with staff, this board has come up with many efficiencies and savings that you may or may not know about. 2.2 million in unfunded vacant public safety positions that were done. Increased savings in employee benefits, including a modest $50,000 in dental savings, but $50,000 here, $50,000 there. 1.7 million in medical and pharmaceutical savings, and that came from a conference that I attended and met a person that had this program. And we came and did a trial, and they identified that the pharmacists and doctors were over-prescribing drugs that weren't generic, and we saved 1.7 million just doing that. Who would have thought? So we all have worked together to look at what's best. And some lady said, "Show me the budget." Here's the budget. We have a budget. We work hard on this budget. Are there holes in that budget? Certainly. Are there things we can do different? Sure. But you elect us to make the hard choices. And those are things that we will continue to do. You know, it amazes me that all the taxes that everybody pays, they look at the bottom line and they hone in on us. I don't see any of you at the school board talking about their taxes. That's 2/3 of your bill on your appraised value, no floating homestead exemption. And trust me, my daughter's a teacher. I would not ever take money from them. But that's where 2/3 of your money goes. Why aren't you there talking to them? Why aren't you there working with them to try to reduce their budget? And I don't know their budget. That's their business. They don't know our budget. But this is only a small portion. And in Cobb County, you're protected with a floating homestead exemption. Nowhere else. Go find someplace else that does that. Public safety. And I agree with the commissioners, we need a public safety fund, just like the fire fund. We take it out, we reduce the general fund by that amount, and that's protected and dedicated. We need that. We need to have the regional library concept. We need a fleet pool concept like Commissioner Ott has talked about. Commissioner Ott has some great ideas. But that doesn't get us where we need to be today or tomorrow. This 1.1 is a continuation budget that keeps us where we are today. The chairman's proposal of 1.7 gets where we need to be in the next five years. It's a restoration budget. I think it's time to invest in Cobb's future. I think it's time for all of us to step up so our kids and our grandkids will have a better place here than when we got here. And my goal has always been to make Cobb a better place than when I got here. And to do that, you have to invest in Cobb's future. I'm never short from doing my duty and doing what I think is right, and I've never not been able to look myself in the mirror, other than I'm getting uglier every year. And no, I do not dye my hair. It's called duck dynasty camouflage. So we have to make the hard choices. I applaud the chairman and I applaud this board for doing what we've done to even get to this point, the efforts you cannot imagine that we have gone through. The slings and arrows we have endured, we shouldn't have to do. There should be some respect out there. And I'm not saying you don't have, but there are those that do not. I've been challenged to a fistfight. I've been threatened. I've been called every name in the book. Why? And I'm not alone. Whether you're for or against this, people, you need to start respecting these people up here. Because if you think we're up there for the money, you're crazy. I have done this for 16 years. And the only thing I'm running for now is the hills. But I will not leave this county worse off than when I got here. So I completely support this. So I completely support this, and will always.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford, very eloquent. Commissioner Cupid.
That standing ovation was well deserved, and your comments were on point, Commissioner. And I'm not going to try to follow that. I think I've said enough up to this time frame. I think probably the comment that struck me the most was the gentleman who came up here and who said, um, that we've probably already made up our minds, and his comments didn't mean much. And I can't remember the gentleman's name, but every time you come up here, you leave an impact. And we don't ever walk away without considering um, what you say. And I've heard you speak in other forums, and you're always very thoughtful in the suggestions that you made. So I don't know if you're here tonight, but um, I feel that many a notebook of the comments people make when they come to the meetings, and I do my best to take them into account. And as I shared at the last meeting, and maybe in prior settings, Chairman, that my perspective on this budget is not by just the comments we received during this period, but the comments I've been receiving every day since I've been serving about what the county should do. For those of you who are familiar with the district, it is known to be perhaps lacking in development, or service, or infrastructure, or investment compared to other parts of the county. And since I've been here, every time we've had a budget, it was never time to really invest back into the district. And probably the greatest plus that the district received was when we had the special tax district, which wasn't wholly supported by the board, but it gave an additional 10 million to the Six Flags area. And I had a meeting with another commissioner from a while back, and the commissioner stated that's still not going to be enough for what needs to happen in District 4. This is the first budget that I've seen that has very specific positive impact to the district beyond just maintaining services day-to-day. And while I don't believe that it addresses everything, as one speaker said, "You better not come back here asking for more." And I've never made the assertion that this millage gets us to where we ought to be, but based on the compromise that we've made from additional 1.9 mills of requests that are not going to be on the table, this isn't 1.9 wholly, this is 1.9 additional requests from the 1.7 that we won't meet with this budget. There has been some compromise, there's been a lot of compromise, and some cuts that were, um, that were made. I'm in support of you, Chairman, and I did hear some suggestions by Commissioner Broll and Commissioner Odd, and yes, there was a painstaking exercise. We had our retreat to try to identify cuts, and I walked away just torn. Because again, I say, where can District 4 really afford to have any additional cuts? And so staff did respond, and there's some frustration about us going on a campaign to cut parks and libraries. That was never initiated by us. Someone from the media asked for documentation from that, and they saw where staff was starting to address the millage rate cuts that we needed to make. And they made the story, but we had to take the fall for it. And that was never our desire, because as Commissioner Odd shared, why would we be increasing parks and increasing libraries, and then try to cut it at the same time? But that's okay, because we take a lot of lumps, and we're just, we're used to having thick skin up here. So wearing my thick skin today, even though all the requests I'd like to see aren't on the table, and yes, our employees with this 1.7, there is not a merit increase in this, and we're hoping that that can be addressed outside of this process. And I don't think that that's necessarily a wise thing for us to do. But I've also learned to compromise significantly since I've been here, just to get where we can be, because no one up here is an island unto themselves. It takes three out of five to make things happen. And that's the, that's the um, reality of our being up here. And I'm hoping that, and it sounds like you may have three out of five here today, and you can count me in that number, Chairman.
I look back to my very first meeting here, 19 years ago, and I believe that meeting went to almost midnight. But I've had to learn how to pace myself, because there's a lot of things that we had to do. And this board has done a lot. And I'm trying to create a team up here, because as I learned in my term, time in the Marine Corps, if you stick together, nobody can beat you. And that's why I have really, really uh, worked very hard to be, live to my commitment to everyone in the commissioners here, there's no surprises. I don't, like the Commissioner Cupid said, we're never going to agree on everything, but as long as we understand where we're all coming from, we're going to find a way to get together forward. And the second thing is, I want to state this very unequivocally, I believe in the American people. That's why I did the town halls. I didn't have to do the town halls, all right? But I believe in the American people. I believe in the people in this county. And it started when I first came here, and it was heightened by my campaign. So I had one commissioner tell me that town halls are a mistake. When in the world is it ever a mistake, go talk to the American people? Ever? Is it a mistake to talk to you? So I want you to know right up front here, this is how I govern. I talk to you. I want you to be part of the conversation. I want you to tell us what's on your mind. All right? I get the part about the opposition. That's why this system works, because when we have no opposition, then we get complacent, and then we really do stupid things. So I appreciate what Lisa Adams has done here in her, in America's Prosperity. They have made me a better, better chairman, and it made us focus on things. All right? And I think you also want to know that we do hear you. I'll never forget, the two ladies, 18 months ago, stood up here and talked about the leashing law for dogs. Never forget that as long as I live. All right? Two unknownly got up here and made a passionate plea about leashed dogs that were left on leashes. And you know something, ladies and gentlemen, in three months, Commissioner Weatherford and Commissioner Cupid got an ordinance passed to take care of that. That's the kind of board you have here. So your voices are always heard. You're always, this is your home. We're just guests in your home. All right? Never forget that. The power in this board sits right out there. Be a lot better without the paper. I'm just saying that. Come on, John, wake up, all right? The paper, I have made an effort to be open and transparent as much as I can. And you know, I read, once read somewhere, Ben Bradley says, "The job of the paper is to make our lives miserable." Congratulations, you're doing a great job there, all right? You can go home tonight, you've done your job. But they keep us honest. Someone said tonight, "I don't need to have an ORR. Call me. Call any of us, we'll give you everything that we have." All right? But I understand that there's processes here. But the moment that we try to hide something from you, that's when we lose credibility with you. All right? And it only takes one. It only takes one. But I also don't appreciate people who take a story that's in the press, and then magnify it to something that's totally unrealistic. Who in their right mind would believe that the, this county, this government, has a program for $500 million for a homeless village? Ladies and gentlemen, our proposed budget is only $459 million. All right? I mean, do the math. Get, get real here. So let's, we have to have an informed, an informed society, and what I've been trying to do with this new transparent government, to do exactly that. We had over 16,000, almost 17,000 people look at our website on the budget, since we went online, 17,000. All right? We had over 5,200 people go to the millage rate calculator, to check to make sure that what we're saying here, that yes, your millage rate, your taxes are probably lower now than they were 10 years ago. All right? But we can't be wrong about that. But we make as much as we can, all right, offer to you, and then if we make mistakes like we did with trying to impose the senior center fees, all right, we go out and we apologize for it. But that gave us the opportunity to show our side of the story first. Like, this is what it's all about. And since then, we had over 3,000 people sign up for the senior fees. So you know, we have, we have, the senior fees, by the way, were one of the recommendations from, not this board, from the Citizens Oversight Committee. So I appreciate Lance bringing that up, all right? These are never easy decisions. And I can assure you, ladies and gentlemen, this 1.7 was not in magic that I pulled out it out of my hat. This 1.7 was based on sitting down with every one of these commissioners and their staffs, and coming up with a program, and then after trying to come up with a number that I thought that the citizens could bear, and then go out in the town hall and try to convince you of that. And I think we've done that. All right? I think we've done that. So, I really, really appreciate everything that the staff has done. I appreciate all of you, becoming part of a conversation. This is your country, this is your government. Stay involved. All right? We're only as good as you make us. So I appreciate all you've done tonight, and over the last nine months. You've made us a better, a better board, and, and we absolutely are more responsive to you. And we're not going to stop tonight, because a lot of the proposals that were made here to not be the commissioners, we're going to take those on board, as are some of the suggestions made out there. We are committed to working with you, because I believe this board works. I make a motion to the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, propose a millage rate of 8.46 in general fund, 2.86 in the fire fund, 0.13 in the bond fund, 2.45 in the Cumberland Special Service District 2, and 3.5 in the Six Flags Special Service District Fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, call the question. Passes 3 to 0 with Commissioner Broll and all of the opposition. Okay. We still have one more budget. We have the one more hearing on the budget, okay? So, um, let's just, let's make this a five-minute break, okay? Then we're going to come back and hear the hearing on the budget for those who want, who want to make those comments. We're going to find out. I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm sure, I'm sure. We're now going to conduct the third public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget. The same rules apply. Three minutes, unlimited speakers. Please tell us who you are and where you live. And with that, I'm now declaring this third public hearing open. So please, yes. Governor, welcome.
As I sat here tonight, I wondered why I was so glad that I was out of politics. And suddenly I remembered it. But I hadn't been to a county commission meeting in a long time, and I decided to come tonight because I knew there'd be a good bit of discussion. But I want to put in a good word, I know everything's taken care of, but for my 4-Hers. 4-Hers, I was listening to everybody talk about how long they'd lived in this county. And Stan and I were talking about that. I believe we got everybody beat because we were born here and have been here all that time. And 4-H was a big part of my life and a big part of a lot of folks that you see here. No longer do we show calves and have a pig chain as we did back in those years. But it is, you would be surprised, and if you're not familiar with it, to go to some of the schools where we have 4-H. And it's very strong. South Cobb has a very, very strong 4-H. And it builds leadership and it builds great kids. And of course, you know about the master gardeners and all of that. And the only thing I will tell you, I like this little thing right here. It lets you know how long you got to talk. I can just extend my remarks.
There's no way I'm telling a governor that it's done.
But I do want to tell you this, and so for your future budget considerations, if you don't match that money, you know, it goes away and you don't get your extension service back. You have to start a program that starts all over again. And most of the money, as you know, is state money that comes from the Department of Agriculture. Gary Black was here and he wanted me to second what I'm saying, but he said he had to go to commerce. And so I just appreciate you keeping me in mind and I hope that you can preserve the program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Governor. Sure, Mr. Boe.
Governor Barnes. Governor Barnes. On behalf of the board and, and the 4-Hers and the extension, I'd like to say thank you to you and Marie for hosting the 4-H gala every year at your home, at your lovely home.
Well, thank.
And it's something that, as long as I've been a commissioner, I look forward to every year. And the talent that comes before us is immeasurable.
These kids, and you're all invited. You need to come. It's always in September, and you've been there before, Mr. Chairman, and you've been there. But Lisa, you need to come, and Bob, you need to come, too.
She's been there.
Yeah, Lisa's been there, but these kids, listen, you know, kids get a bad rap.
I haven't. Can I come?
You can come, Bob. Listen, I'm telling you, I'll call you and make sure that you know the day. But these kids get a bad rap today. And there are a lot of great kids.
They're great.
And if you want to see great kids, you come to 4-H. And we're glad to have them every year and we'll continue to do so.
And that was never on the chopping block.
Yeah.
So I don't know where that came from.
Well, listen, I've been through these budget things. You think this is rough? You ought to deal with a bunch of department heads that will drive, that are constitutional officers, but you set their budget. Now, if you don't think that'll drive you up a wall, I'll tell you this last thing. You know, I always say that county commissions and city council members, it's government in the raw because you can't be closer than you are, as you saw tonight. And listen, Ms. Chairman, you're exactly right. Folks disagree, but what is great about this country is that we all can come here. Different folks have different views, but we all leave as one people. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor.
How do you follow that? My name is Linda Hunt. I'm from Marietta. I'd like to thank the board for their work on the budget. The Sunday Miami Marietta Daily Journal painted a concerning picture, so I reached out to the board. I want to thank Commissioner Burl for providing me with specific information on the budget. Thank you, Chairman Boyce, for all those town hall meetings. Commissioner Ott, I was concerned about, you know, what you wanted to cut. And when I reached out to you, you gave me information that allayed my fears. Thank you, Commissioner Cupid, for realizing the employees of Cobb County work hard. Turning straw into gold is what the animal shelter does every day. And I'm quoting you, not the animal shelter, but turning straw into gold. Commissioner Weatherford, thank you for your work while I'm the Board of Commissioners and good luck in the future. Looking at the proposed budget information from 6/13 that Commissioner Burl sent me, I see that the safety village is being moved under the fire fund, freeing up the $281,000. And to me, it says you want to save it. And I think it should be saved. I think it's a great, a great thing. As I've expressed before, the animal shelter is important to me. It looks like the animal shelters budget represents less than 1% of the budget. I'm not sure how doing away with animal control could be justified, but that's a conversation for another day. And obviously, it shouldn't even be a conversation because it was never on the chopping block. But it is my intention to keep a close eye on animal control since it was considered for the 2019 budget as dispensable, in the desirable. And thanks, thank everyone for your service to the county.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening again. My name is Randall Bedgwood. I'm from West Cobb. What I'd like to talk to you about is on the budget, kind of like a line item. You got a proposal in there to create four DOT crews, one for each commissioner. I would strongly suggest that you not do that. That's 20 employees. That's a lot of money, benefits, stuff that's not needed. You need to look at DOT and go back to where we were, I don't know, 20 years ago. DOT used to have a lot of machinery, a lot of employees, sort of like solid waste. Solid waste was Cobb County employees. We privatized that, got rid of the employees or transferred. We didn't get rid of them. We actually transferred them into other jobs within the county. But you need to think about in DOT, contracting out some of those jobs, they can be done better and more efficient by the private sector. You can pothole repair sidewalks. I know that's part of the SLOST thing. You got a crew out there that's supposed to be paid by the SLOST to build sidewalks. That all needs to be privatized. You need to go to contract work to do all that. You're just creating more equipment, more trucks, more personnel problems. You have a problem now getting people that's got CDL driver's license. You can't, you can't get anybody that can pass the test, pass the drug test and stuff. And so you need to, you need to think about just privatizing things. And I'll let it go with that. There's a lot of other things in the budget that get to be done, but that's one of the things that needs to be.
Randall, don't go anywhere for a second.
Hold on one second.
You bring up a good point. We need to tell you some things.
But we need to, now, do you think the medians and the right of ways look good right now?
In my area, I think they do.
Well, most people don't, and it's privatized.
Yeah.
It's a contractor right now who cannot keep up. The reason, and I'm liaison with DOT, and the reason that I brought this forward to the chairman is that back in 2006, when most people will tell you that the right of ways and the medians looked their best, there were individual road crews for each district. Now, the interesting thing is that the cost of those personnel is exactly the same as the contract that the county currently has. The only difference is the one-time cost to buy the equipment. But, but the facts are that the contract that is in existence today is the same cost as the personnel. And the, there is one crew that has been working around the county. They are on like the third round, going around to the different right of ways and medians, and the contractor's on the first round. So, so the county tried outsourcing or privatizing it, and it didn't work.
Does that cost include benefits and everything for those employees working this comp and all that?
It does. It's fully loaded positions and it's the same, it's the same cost as the contract. Like I said, the only difference is the cost, the one-time cost to buy the equipment.
Yeah, I still think, I mean, I mean, you got your facts, but I still think it could be contracted out. There's somebody out there that'll do it.
Well, unfortunately, there hasn't been because the county's had to go to different contractors each of the last three years.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hey, good evening. My name's Chris Benson, and other than the first two days of my life where I was at Piedmont Hospital, I've lived in Cobb County for the subsequent 48 years, so maybe even longer than most of the people here tonight. I am always up here for animal issues, as you may recall. One thing I've never mentioned before, since Gary Black was here, I used to be his chairman for his companion animal advisory board. I did two years of that. And that's, of course, why I'm here tonight. As we look at the budget, it sounds like things may be safe there, but I just wanted to say that it's been, this board has been amazing. We've had passports that I was less supportive of because they weren't as animal friendly as you guys are, and I just wanted to say thank you very much for that. The tethering, the anti-tethering law last year was fantastic. I hope that, given the fact that animal services only consumes 1/3 of 1% of the budget and that seven out of 10 American families have pets, and that I would argue that our shelter system here and the rescues that support that are one of the very foundational things of our community, that not only might you maintain the budget as it is, but maybe even consider increasing it over time so that we can do even better. It's a fantastic brand message for our county to everybody around. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you very much for your time, and I hope you keep going on this.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, for your service, your comments tonight.
Good evening. Linda Lucas, District 3. I'd just like to make a comment about the landscaping road crews, whatever you call them. I'm in District 3, and along Bell's Ferry Road, they were cutting branches over the sidewalk a couple of days ago. And I just have to say, I mean, maybe I'm like a little neat-nick or something, but what a mess! I'm telling you, they weren't cutting with a chainsaw. They were hacking with all these like, you know, things coming out like that. I mean, I could have done better with my mother's little trusty chainsaw from Pennsylvania. So, I mean, that needs to be, whoever did that, you should look at that on Bell's Ferry Road.
Do me a favor next time.
Take a picture of it?
That, and get ahold of Commissioner Burl. All right? That's what we're here for.
Okay, I don't know, it was like this week.
No, we work for you, all right? We will jump on it, I can guarantee you.
But it's like really messy.
So we'll get you to.
And it's like they're sticking out like.
We get it, we get it.
You know, like they were hacked off.
But we'll get with Inger. If you give her her number, seeing her right there, give her your contact info. Oh, okay, you know Linda, so.
Okay, I'll go see if I can take.
Okay, all right, thanks. Appreciate it, absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up.
Thanks.
Hey, Ron.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Syfan. I didn't speak on the milage rate because clearly y'all were going to have to raise the milage rate, whether it's 1.5 or 1.7 or whatever. Y'all were going to do that. You approved a 1.7 milage rate, so I'm going to assume that's going to be pretty close to automatically approving this budget. $454 million was the last number that I saw. That's a big increase over the previous years. If, and you addressed this at one of the town halls, more than one of the town halls, that this should get the county set so that there won't be future milage rate increases, that you'll be able to move some things around and you'll be able to handle things in the future with this milage rate. And I hope that's correct. At the same time, there's a lot of people who moved to Cobb County because this is a low-tax county, and that's what they want. They moved here for that reason. I would encourage y'all, I think Commissioners Ott and Burl both made some really good suggestions on some changes that could be made that could reduce spending. And one other thing that Commissioner Ott touched on, there's a lot of spending that comes from, especially the last SLOST, which was just loaded up with a lot of, as Commissioner Ott put it, wants-not-needs. A lot of little projects that were wants-not-needs. And I get it that the SLOST paid for the startup costs for all of those projects and services, but y'all don't have any money in the budget for all of the future operating and maintenance costs that you're locked into. That's something that I want to put on the table that needs to change. And I understand the projects list on the current SLOST list is the projects list, but that's got to change for the future or we are going to be locked into more and more future tax increases in the future. That's got to change. Thank you.
And Ron, I just want you to know, we adopted a policy last year of doing that.
Okay.
So it cannot come out of SLOST anymore until it won't ever been tied to it. So, plus, we've changed the, the SLOST Oversight Committee has, we give them additional responsibilities to make sure that we're on, on time and on budget. So I hope that gives you some assurance that we're getting there.
That's a great point, but for future SLOST, I think the SLOST process needs to be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further participants, I now declare this public, third public hearing closed. And I'll start with Commissioner Cupid first.
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Weatherford. Commissioner Burl. Commissioner Ott. Okay. With that, I make a motion to the board adopt the fiscal year 2019 budget and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
And call the question. Passes three to zero, three to two with Commissioners Burl and Ott in opposition. Passes three to zero, three to two with Commissioners Burl and Ott in opposition. So with that, we'll now go on to, alas, is the tax levy for the, for the school, school construction bond. Right, I'll have you explain that, Bill, all right? He's been chomping at the bit all night to say something.
I was hoping to get through the meeting without saying anything. This is great. Okay, so with this agenda, I'm sure we are going to be adopting a resolution establishing the 2018 county tax levy for countywide school, school construction bonds proposed and for maintenance and operation of the schools as required by law. So the school board has already set their milage rate. The board has to affirm, or to approve that milage rate as we are the taxing authority. Does that, does that cover everything you need? Okay, so with that, I, I ask the Board of Commissioners to adopt the Board of Education's resolution establishing the 2018 countywide school tax for the maintenance and operations of schools at 18.9 mils, countywide tax for construction bonds of 0 mils, Marietta property annex 1995 through 2004 at 0 mils as required by law, and authorize the chairman to execute the milage resolution from the Cobb County Board of Education.
Okay, and just to make sure that there's no mistake and that the school board can't go back and say we didn't do our job, I'm going to repeat exactly what you said in the form of a motion, all right?
Sounds good.
So I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the Board of Education's resolution establishing the 2018 countywide school tax for maintenance and operation of schools, 18.9 mils, countywide school tax for construction bonds, 0.00 mils, Marietta property annex 1995 through 2004 at 0.00 mils as required by law, and authorize the chairman to execute the milage resolution for the Cobb County Board of Education. Do we have a second? We have a second and discussion? Call a question, and it passes five to zero. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, now we'll go on to public comment. Anybody standing for a public comment? Ms. Dance?
Yes, you have one speaker, Smith Duval. If you could come forward, please.
What's his name?
Smith Duval.
Ms. Duval? Okay, I think she's probably left. Do we have any, anybody left in the spillover room? Okay, we're good. All right, thanks, I appreciate it. All right, so with that, let's go on to the consent agenda. And there's, there are two, two add-ons tonight. And I'm going to, just to make sure that we do this correctly, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask them, make a motion that we add them separately, all right? I'll read each one separately. Okay, the first one is, you put that on. Okay, thank you. Here's the first, first add-on. It's to authorize the settlement of a, of a litigation between Cobb County versus Courtney Newton for the purpose of settling litigation, ongoing litigation, further authorize me to execute the necessary documents. We discussed this with the Board yesterday in executive session, and now we're going to bring this out to, to, to the Board for approval. So I am going to make a motion that the Board authorize settlement of Cobb County, Georgia versus Courtney Nelt Newton and Associates Incorporated and others, Superior Court of Cobb, Cobb County, Georgia, civil action file number 16-1-681-99. Authorize counsel to prepare and execute any necessary documents for the purpose of settling ongoing litigation, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. That's the first add-on. And the second one is a parking lease agreement. Is Jimmy here? Yeah, could you come up here and tell us the good deal this is? Sure. Sort of give us a quick rundown of what exactly we're going to be approving here tonight.
Yes. They have a SLOST project beginning at Lassiter High School. They're going to be building an additional gymnasium, which is going to eat up a lot of their parking for their students. We were approached by the school district to allow as many as possible, and, and we've identified up to 180 spaces within Harrison Park that they can utilize during the school day on the days that schools are in session. In return for that, the school system has agreed to give us one-half of their permit fee that they charge a student for parking.
Okay. Commissioner Burl has a question.
Thanks, and thanks to Legal, too, for working all this out. I just want to be sure everybody knows that it's just during the school day hours.
Yes, ma'am.
So ball fields and, you know, tournaments and things like that at night and on weekends won't be interrupted.
And it will only be on the days that school is in session. So if there are holidays during the week, it will not be applicable then.
And what's the duration of the remodel or rebuild of the gymnasium? Do they think it'll take?
At least 12 months, so we know it'll be through this school year. There's a very good chance it could go into the fall semester of next year. But we would receive half the revenue for that as well.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy, for working on that.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to add to the consent agenda that the Board approve a parking lease agreement with the Cobb County School District for Lassiter High School parking at Carl Harrison Park, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents in a form acceptable to the county attorney's office. Do we have a second? A second, any discussion? Call a question? Okay, so those are both added to the consent agenda. With that, I make a motion that we accept, that we approve the consent agenda as revised. That could be, all right, let me see. I move to approve the consent agenda as revised, adding non-agenda items to authorize settlement of Cobb County, Georgia versus Courtney Newton and Associates, and approve a parking lease agreement with Cobb County School District for Lassiter High School parking at Carl Harrison Park, and authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
All right, so we have a second. Any further discussions? Call a question. Passes five to zero, and I apologize to Millie because she gave me the script, and she's giving me the evil eye out there. I'm going to have to go back to be retrained. They're all going to be, they're all giving me the evil eye. All right, so with that, I believe that's it, right? Except for Commissioner comments? Oh, darn, I'm trying to move this around here. I'm having a lot. Need to give me a high sign here, Cornelius. All right, so the first one is, Regular Support Services Agency. Here we go. Sorry, Sharon. Nothing personal.
I was going to get to go. No, I'm kidding. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Our existing data center firewalls are nearing end of life and do not support the multi-layer, in-depth cybersecurity policy the county is currently implementing. We conducted proof-of-value tests on four leading enterprise firewalls and elected the next, and have selected the next generation Cisco Firepower Firewall to best meet the county requirements for increased throughput and secure capabilities. Hardware and implementation services for two new Cisco Firepower Firewalls are available to purchase from GSA contract with Sovereign Systems. Data center building technology modernization is an approved project for the Support Services Technology Improvements Work Program under the 2016 SLOST. Computer hardware and software are eligible capital projects under the 2016 SLOST. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of Cisco Firewall hardware and implementation services in amount not to exceed $396,398.08 under provisions of U.S. General Services Administration contract GS 35F 03495 with Sovereign Systems. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and authorize the purchasing director to execute the purchase order of any other and any other necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Next one is property management.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We've properties got four items this evening. Our first is to approve supplemental, supplemental agreement number one final to the contract with Black Creek Integrated System Corporation for the security modification in the state court building. The security modification is an eligible capital improvement project under the 2011 SLOST. Funding is available in the 2011 SLOST. The Board of Commissioners approves supplemental agreement number one final to the contract with Black Creek Integrated Systems Corporation in the amount of $35,889.61 for security modifications in the state court building located at 12 East Park Square. A 2011 SLOST project authorized the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott?
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Our second item is to approve supplemental agreement number two final to the contract with John W. Spratlin &amp; Son LLC for construction of the Acworth-Kennesaw Health Facility and authorize return of all remaining project funds to the Cobb and Douglas Public Health. The Acworth-Kennesaw and Smyrna Health Center facilities are an eligible capital improvement project under the 2016 SLOST. The Board of Commissioners approves supplemental agreement number two final in the deduct, deductive amount of $91,987.72 to the contract with John W. Spratlin &amp; Son LLC for the construction of the Acworth-Kennesaw Health Facility. A 2016 SLOST project authorized a return of all remaining project funds in amount of $180,941.67 to the Cobb and Douglas Public Health, authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve his presentation.
Second.
A second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Our third item is to approve supplemental agreement number two final to the contract with Albion General Contractors for life safety modifications for the expansion and renovation of the North Cobb Senior Center. The building security emergency life safety upgrades is an eligible capital improvement project under the 2016 SLOST. Funding is available in the 2016 SLOST. The Board of Commissioners approves supplemental agreement number two final to the contract with Albion General Contractors in the amount of $24,767.59 for life safety modifications for the expansion and renovation of the North Cobb Senior Center located at 3900 South Marietta, Acworth. A 2011 and 2016 SLOST project authorized the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion approved, sir.
Second, any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Our last item is to approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with John W. Spratlin &amp; Son LLC to establish a guaranteed max price for services to build replacement fire station number one. The relocation of fire station number one is an eligible capital improvement project under the 2016 SLOST. The Board of Commissioners approves supplemental agreement number one to the contract with John W. Spratlin &amp; Son LLC in the amount of $3,912,100 to establish the guaranteed max price for the construction, manage at risk services to build replacement fire station one in the amount of $4,172,100 located at 5781 Mabelton Parkway, Mabelton. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
All right, thanks, sir.
Okay, public comment? I believe we don't have any, anyone else? Think Chairman Ott has an appointment to announce?
I just want to announce, and he's been here the entire time. Just want to announce the appointment of Andy Smith, the Neighborhood Safety Commission, for the term balance to expire on December 31st, 2019. And it's to replace Donald Towers, who, with change in work, could not meet the meeting schedule. So Andy's agreed to take the position, so, so thank you.
Okay, comments? I'll start with Commissioner Burl first. Yes.
Well, since it's so late, I only have one announcement tonight. So I don't need five minutes. I'll share.
Make a clerk's note.
I'll share about time. Okay, on August the 25th, Cobb County Board of Commissioners is hosting a Vietnam Veterans Ceremony for certification with the State Veterans Affairs Commission. And it will be at our Civic Center, August 25th at 2:00 p.m. There are forms and information in the back for any Vietnam veterans. We want to recognize them and welcome them home since they didn't receive a proper welcome back. And this is a program that the governor started a few years ago on the 50th anniversary of the ending of the Vietnam War. So if you know of any Vietnam veterans at your, any organizations or churches that you'd like to distribute, let me know, and I can get you some forms for them to, to attend. And the families are welcome as well. So thank you. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Ott?
I just have two. The first one, you've all read about Coffee with a Cop with Your Cop or Coffee with a Cop. We do things a little bit different around here, you know, since we have chickens in District Two. We have Chicken With Your Cop. It's going to be on Thursday, August 8th at 6:00 p.m. So this is dinner, no coffee, at Zaxby's on Delk Road, which is basically between Terrell Mill and Powers Ferry. So a little bit of difference, you know, bring some chicken, get your chickens, and come meet you up, please.
That would be kind of the chickens in District Three if I was you.
That's Natalie.
Right, yeah. All right, now, here's the really good news for all your parents in the audience. School starts on Wednesday for all Cobb County kids. Mine are, mine's going away, so it doesn't matter. But more importantly, in District Two, we have two new schools. Next week, they're going to have the meet and greet, and then the grand, or the ribbon-cutting grand opening of the new Brumby Elementary School and East Cobb Middle School. Open house will be on Tuesday and ribbon-cutting on Wednesday, so the 30th and 31st. If you, if you have a chance to go over there, the schools are amazing. And, and not just the buildings, but the grounds for the children and everything. Those that are familiar with Brumby, the old school was old and tired, and the new school really is, is a great improvement. So go check out the school. That's all I have.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cupid?
No comments, sir.
No, no fair. You've got to come up with something for 30 seconds.
God bless you and good night.
Okay.
Commissioner Cupid, it's spent by this entire process. I'm just grateful that we are where we are, and I appreciate.
Well, in District One, we still have Coffee with a Cop. So that's going to be tomorrow from 12:00 to 1:30 at the Bubble Tea and Coffee Bar. Yeah, well, we had Burger with a Cop last month, so this is bubble tea, whatever that is. So that's tomorrow night. It's at 3344 Cobb Parkway in the Staples Shopping Center in Acworth. So if you're out there tomorrow around lunchtime, stop in and see them and meet them. It's great, grim guys. Chief Restor has implemented the community relations group, and they're really getting out and doing a good job, so thanks.
And I'll just be very brief here. It has been my, my fortunate life to have the opportunity to work with a lot of many, many people. Some of them made some really, really hard and courageous decisions. I don't know of a more difficult but more courageous decision than the campaign, knowing that you're supporting the tax raise. I was, I was struck by a comment, not just tonight, by other people, saying that the easy way out for our selected officials was to raise taxes. They need to sit up here for a month and see what it is that we go through trying not to do that. But there comes a time when you have to make the right, you have to make the right call. And as I said earlier, we were paid, we were elected to lead and make the hard calls. So Commissioner Weatherford, my hat's off to you. I really mean that. That was a, that, that took some real courage to do what you did. But more importantly, it didn't let you deflect tonight from still making the right call because you told me a long time ago that you are a man who believes in doing what's right. And tonight, you've shown me that no matter what else you do in life, I'll always remember you as being exactly that for what you did tonight. So thank you for standing up and being who you are. So thank you for standing up and being who you are. And with that, we're adjourned.